Madam Mayor, we are now live.
So, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Petaluma City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, August 8th. I'd now like to invite Monica Aparicio and Maria Galvez to provide information for those who want to listen in Spanish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Buenas tardes a todas las personas que están unidos esta tarde a la reunión, a los que gusten escuchar en español, tenemos un canal de español. En unos momentos cuando inicie la interpretación, en la parte de abajo de su pantalla verán un icono de un globo, un mundo, o tres puntitos con la palabra more, y hay que presionar ahí, elegir interpretación de idiomas, y elegir el idioma español. Gracias. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'd also like to announce that our agenda system, Granicus, is currently down system-wide. This meeting will be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. Links to the livestream, as well as the PDF agenda package and Zoom are all available on the city website. I'd like to ask the city clerk to do the roll call.
Excuse me. Barrett?
Present.
Barnacle?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Healy?
Here.
King?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Posake?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We will now have a moment of silence. I'd like to remind the public in attendance at City Hall to submit speaker cards in the Dropbox if they wish to speak. Those wishing to speak during general public comment need to submit their speaker card in the box prior to the start of general public comment. Those attending virtually can raise their hand in Zoom when instructed to do so. There are no agenda changes and deletions to the current agenda. Now, we will go to general public comment. And I have two cards for here in the City Hall. Did you want to check on Zoom?
Madam Mayor, I would defer to the city clerk to see if there was any written that came in via email.
Thank you. I will ask the city clerk if you received any general public comments.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we received three general public comments prior to the meeting, which are posted online with the agenda package.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I will start a 30-second clock for general public comment. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk. If they have not already done so, members of the public attending online or by phone should raise their virtual hand or press star nine if participating by phone. Madam Mayor, at this time, we have two speakers, so we have four total.
Thank you. So, we will have three minutes for each speaker, and I will start with Suzanne Clark.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Clark. I live in Petaluma, and I just wanted to say I take umbrage with the sign that says brown is a new green. It really bothers me because I think that means that people think that just letting their gardens or trees or whatever go brown is okay, and in fact, they think that's a good thing. And I think that is something we need to correct. What we need to do is choose the type of things that we want to grow and encourage those things to grow so that they benefit, you know, insects, for example, pollinating plants, milkweed for monarchs and other host plants. That's not a waste of water, and I'm just afraid that, you know, people think that. So, I think the city should model what it believes. I was on the tree committee about, I don't know, four or five years ago, and I led a group to assess the water needs of the tree list on the Petaluma-approved trees. And if you look at the very beginning, it's there, and the city has not followed the guidelines that we agreed on. And for example, you see maple trees around here. Maple trees are from the northeast, and they're the most thirsty, and they're planted all the time, all the time. And so, I would like the city to model the type of planting that we need to do by choosing the right place, the right plant in the right place, and also creating habitat for native insects and pollinators. So, I'd be happy to work with the city on choice of things. In fact, the mayor has a monarch pledge to support monarch habitat, which is pollinators as well, and I would like to offer my help for that. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hanania.
Good evening. I don't know how many of you actually read the public comment that submitted online. There's a gentleman who submitted one tonight, which is, I agree with him 100%. It is something I intend to speak about. It is almost impossible to hear some of you during the meeting, and I don't know what is going on, whether the mics are not working properly or you're too far from the mic. And when you're sitting back there, it is almost impossible, and we don't want to be screaming from back there, you know, speaking to the mics, speaking to the mic. So, I, you know, if you guys could do something about that, it would be greatly appreciated. I attended the event that took place last Friday, Locoluma, and it was a very nice event, and there were some, I believe there was three of you attended the event. There was a lot of volunteer, and it was really nice to see everybody who participated. But one of the things that took place after the meeting, and I believe Posake and McDowell have already left, and Delinda was still there doing some work. Everybody was trying to figure out what to do with all the food, which was a tremendous amount of food left behind, and some people, including myself, suggested to take it to the shelter. So, I am glad to say, or I'm proud to say that I was the chosen one. All the food was loaded up in my vehicle. I took it down to the shelter. One of the employees came out to find out what was I doing, and he took several of the trays. I took eight trays, and they were all full, and he took several of the trays inside. The other trays were passed on to the village, and they were very kind, and then the rest of it were passed by me by foot to the other people who are out and about. But one of the things that I really like to point out to you, if you could only see those people down there's reaction and the look in their eyes and how much they appreciate it, and some of them almost had a tear in their eye, and there's a couple of older ladies were so kind, and they were asking if they can have more than one, and I said, of course, you can have as many as you want, but nobody took more than three, and it was really very thankful to the people who put the event, and they offered the food to go to the shelter, and that's all I have to say for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and now we will go to the general public comment speakers who are from, on Zoom. Late, late general public comments are not going to be accepted, sorry.
The next speaker that we have is Ellen O. Ellen, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Hi there, this is Ellen Oepsler. I actually had submitted my comment online, like I usually do, but because the system was down, I'm not sure if you received it. And by the way, I'm always unsure if you received it, but I assume that you do, but in this case, I am going to repeat it, so please forgive me if you have received it. But I want to thank all the council members who voted for the Tenant Protection Act at the last meeting, and I understand because the vote was not unanimous, the act is going to require a second reading, and that can't happen until your next meeting, which happens at September 12th. And then even after that meeting, after the second reading, there's going to be another month before implementation, because Sonoma County's COVID-related just cause eviction rules are going to sunset on September 30th. There's going to be a two-week gap in ensuring tenants are protected from unjust evictions. And as, you know, you all talked about last week a lot, and I know you know, I mean, hopefully that won't matter two weeks, but you never know, and I'm just hoping to avoid the gap that you'll place on that September 12th agenda, not only the second reading of the actual act, the Tenant Protection Act, that's going to be in effect until March, but also place on the agenda an emergency ordinance that will just fill in that gap to make sure that there's no laps in coverage. Thank you so much for your consideration and for all you do.
Speaker? Moderator?
So, the next speaker that we have is Mary Dooley. Mary, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Hello, City Council and Madam Mayor. I'm speaking on the topic of the Oak Hill Park Well and Reservoir Projects. I'm a regular visitor and walk around the empty reservoir a couple times a week. People are worried about how a new well and a working reservoir might impact their lives. I think these two projects will help us all if we think big and beyond our backyard. What I want to see is a healthy tree canopy in Oak Hill Park, where we plant significantly more native trees than we've seen in decades. The gopher hole minefield slash ankle twister is ready to be reimagined. Let's think comfortable ground covers and natural gopher control for the sake of community gathering, walking, picnicking, rolling, playing, and other healthy activities. Make the plantings and landscaping of Oak Hill Park beautiful, water and user-friendly, and biodiverse. The landscaping efforts seem to only include tree removal and a few passes of the ride-on mower each year. It's a bummer to see the trees dying, removed, and not being replaced. The way things are going, I'm afraid we'll have to change the name of Oak Hill Park to just Hill Park. So many trees have been recently removed. It would be fair and very appreciated if the city would apply the zoning code to its own properties and require tree mitigation immediately. A tree committee member told me that the city will not plant more trees because we don't have enough water. This is at odds with what we know about the need for trees citywide. Well, if we had a well, maybe we could plant more trees. If we had a well, we would have a water source not dependent on an outside agency. If we have a functioning reservoir, we have a backup source in case of emergency. If the reservoir has rain catchment, we can support summer watering. And one other idea is to consider a new reservoir with a living roof, places to sit and be. Think of it as our own miniature High Line, New York City style, and don't worry about privacy for neighbors, just plant more trees and screening shrubs. I'm for the well and the reservoir and for getting creative with the reservoir roof, making it accessible for use instead of an ugly lid surrounded by a barbed wire fence. making it accessible for use instead of an ugly lid surrounded by a barbed wire fence. This is an opportunity. Oh, and I'm all for the dog park, though it's dusty and fox tail ridden, it's fixable and it's a keeper. Thanks for hearing me.
And Madam Mayor, that's the last public commentary we have.
Thank you very much. And now we will go to council comment and I will start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been reading proclamations, cutting ribbons like there's no tomorrow. First one and probably the most interesting is that Lagunitas had a Lagunitas IPA Day. And the city had a proclamation read for this. And at the bottom in the small print, after it says Lagunitas IPA Day, it says officially decreed by Mayor Teresa Barrett on August 4th, 2022, at 4:20 PM in the Lagunitas Amphitheater. And since I'd already read this, I was sure to check my watch and it did happen at exactly 4:20 PM. Beyond that, we cut ribbon for the latest Highway 101 project and cut ribbon for the magnificent mural on the corner or near the corner of, of Petaluma Boulevard and B Street. Oh yes, and we have a whole bag. I'm going to give those to the mayor first to see what she wants to take out. And but we have, just for the other council people as well as the citizens in the audience, we have stickers and we have top hats with the Lagunitas dog on them. We have a couple of large T-shirts. We have several scarves, some lapel pins and a couple of lanyards. Yes, and I guess a shout out relative to that mural. The artists are Amanda Lynn and Lady Mags. And they were honored as well at that event. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. So along with the Vice Mayor and Councilmember McDonald, I attended the League of Cities North Bay Division meeting here in Petaluma last Thursday. Couple of things of interest. There was a presentation by the governor's office on his proposals for Care Court, which is winding its way through the legislature. And what I hadn't realized before, it certainly is, you know, addressing mental health issues within our homeless population, but it's really much more targeted than that. And the figure was provided that because it's really just focusing on folks with acute schizophrenia, that it really impacts about 7,000 to 10,000 people statewide. But that would be a huge impact in terms of our most challenging homeless cohort. And then secondly, there were elections for the new, new division representatives for the next year. I was elected as the division's director on the Cal Cities Board of Directors. So I'll be taking over from Councilmember Pippin Do of Vallejo, who was termed out from that position under the division's bylaws. And it's been a long time since Petaluma's hadn't elected on the Cal Cities Board of Directors. I know Helen Putnam did it. I don't know if anyone else since her did. But anyway, it'll be an interesting ride, I'm sure. And then just to follow up what I said at about 12:30 in the morning last Tuesday, I would want to reiterate my willingness to consider an urgency ordinance on continuing the county's tenant protections in place for 90 or more days so that we can have the kind of outreach that was done, that should have been done but wasn't done with all the stakeholders so that there would not be a lapse of protections. And I would require, I believe the city attorney was uncertain at 12:30 on Tuesday morning if that was really a viable option for us. But he has between now and September 12th to do the research and advise us on that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnacle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Have not had any liaison assignments. I did attend the Localuma event during the day. And there was a resident about rehabbing McNear Park and some of the issues in that park. Appreciate Ms. Clark's public comment about planting the right thing. I do agree that we, we need to be sending clear messages about that. And then to Mary Dooley's comment, some of the trees up in Oak Hill Park were actually just cut down because a tree fell on an electrical line after there were some issues. The residents there alerted the city that there was a hazard. And then it actually came true like almost immediately and a tree fell on the electrical line and they came out and removed a bunch of trees that were, that were actually in pretty bad shape and were creating a really big harm for the city. But I agree with pretty much everything else you just said. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you. I have had no liaison assignments since last Monday. But I did attend Petaluma Night Out with the Cool Petaluma Group and the booth there, and it was incredibly successful. What a fabulous turnout. And I too was at the ribbon cutting for the expansion of the carpool lanes on the 101 as your director for the SCTA. And as the STAT team will tell you, they actually dropped me off on the bus on the tour so I could go attend the ribbon cutting. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you. It's been a short week between, between meetings and so not a lot of liaisons. But it was fun to get out there and see the ribbon cutting for the freeway. But the point I tried to make to a variety of other people is we need the ribbon cutting for the smart path. That has been impacted by the freeway project. And I think the city will try and host that. And I think it should be about 45 days out. So stay tuned for all those who want that crosstown connector opened. And then all the discussion about Oak Hill doesn't mention the public meeting the city's hosting, which is August 11th and should be noted for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have one liaison assignment with Sonoma Clean Power last week. A relatively mild meeting by, by our standards. Not a lot going on legislatively except in Washington where there was a major climate bill that has at least passed the Senate at this point. But there is, there was one item that I will forward to staff relating to one of the programs that is being funded by the California Public Utilities Commission that I think the city might be able to take advantage of once we get our solar panels up and running at the various facilities. So that is it on my liaison. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. And I have no report this week as well. Assistant City Manager.
No report tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So now we're on to the consent calendar.
Excuse me, Madam.
I'm sorry, the city attorney wants to respond to Councilmember Healy.
Yes, if I could ask a quick, maybe, maybe some guidance or straw poll or something from the council. I obviously heard Councilmember Healy's comments. We've been trying to determine whether the county COVID-based eviction protections are expiring as a discretionary or policy choice of the county or whether that's not by choice in reliance on state statute. It seems like their current, the expiration of their current protections are keyed to what they refer to as the, as the payment window, the repayment period. So I'm trying to determine from them which is the case. So, and that will help answer whether it would be possible for the city to adopt its own urgency ordinance to provide the same protections for a limited period of time. So if it's appropriate on council agendas during council comment to get direction about future agenda items. And as you all know, for passage of an urgency ordinance under our charter, that requires unanimous council support. So if there would be unanimous council support, then we're happy to, because we'll have to bring that as an actual agenda item on the agenda, et cetera, and do the legwork and research to have that ready if it's possible to do. So I'd like to see if there is that direction. I'm not trying to undermine Councilmember Healy's suggestion, but just to confirm that that's broad direction from the council. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So I will just do a straw poll with the council. Does anybody want to raise their hand who are in favor of that? Okay, there's.
And one quick question. I think on this ordinance, I do not have to recuse.
I don't think so, but if you do, we'll certainly let you know ahead of time.
But it's a straw, straw poll.
Right, that's right. It's safe.
And Councilmember King.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay. And so if you are going to check on Councilmember McDonald having to perhaps, or perhaps not recuse on that vote, it was brought up during public comment last time that as a landlord, if he had to recuse himself, why doesn't the council member who is a tenant need to recuse herself? And.
We should look at that also. It looks like the way the conflicts analysis goes, it's a little different between tenants and landlords, but we certainly will look at that. Happy, that's, that's absolutely, we should look at.
Okay, so I think you have direction.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And so with that, we are going to go to the consent calendar. And these are items one through five on the consent calendar. And before I ask council if they have anything they want to say about the consent calendar, Assistant City Manager Brian Cockrum would like to make two announcements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of updates on the consent calendar. So for item number four, related to the biomass to biofuel, we, because of our agenda system being down, we were not able to upload the signed version of the change order that was referenced in that agenda item. There was an unsigned version attached. But we did receive the signed version on Friday. So just wanted to update council and the public on that. And we will be attaching that once the system is back up and running. And then on another note, on agenda item number one, which is the responses to the grand jury report, we did have a couple of edits that staff are proposing to, to a couple of the responses. We do have printed copies in front of the council and there are also printed copies in the back of the room. I'm going to share my screen for just a second here so that members of the public watching online as well as Councilmember King have the benefit of seeing those changes. So just wanted to flag, this is on the report that's entitled Affordable Housing Past, Present and Future. And the two changes are recommendations six and seven, R6 and R7. So you can see on this first page that I'm displaying with the red text. We are editing the R6 response a little bit by modifying it to say that it's partially implemented and that we're continuing to work with the NAPA-Sonoma ADU Accelerator Program to fully implement that recommendation. And then I'll just scroll down to the next page here. So this is the more substantive edit, R7. After re-reviewing this, staff felt that we, we kind of missed the mark on our response. So this is a full rewrite. And we had initially said that we would not be implementing it, but we have changed that to say that we have partially implemented it and will continue to look at ways that we can improve our development review committee. So this response really talks about the fact that we already have a development review committee. It's been pretty successful. We have, we have some good feedback from folks who have participated in that process. And, and again, we'll continue to collaborate with anybody who's bringing a development project forward to give them that opportunity to go in front of the development review committee moving forward and then tweak our process as needed to continue to improve the overall process. So just wanted to flag those for the council. And I would request that with the resolution adopting this item, that those edits be incorporated into the responses. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And were you going to speak on another item?
That was it. Just flagged the change order on item four as being assigned change order. So that was the second.
Okay, I thought there was something on item four that.
Correct. So we received a change order that was referenced in the staff report. We, the one we had provided on earlier last week was unsigned by the contractor. We then received the signed version of the weekend. So that will be uploaded once our system's back up and running.
Okay, thank you for both those. Okay. So is there anybody who wants, Councilmember Healy?
So I don't need to pull anything off, but I had a question on one item. If I may. So on agenda item four, 16 change orders on a project is kind of a record and not in a good way. And that kind of seems to imply that maybe the planning could have been done better. Could staff respond to that, please?
Thank you, Councilmember Healy. I'll see if our Public Works and Utilities Director, Christopher Bolt, could go ahead and respond to that.
While Christopher's joining, I'll add a couple of items because he is a relatively recent addition to our staff. And, and we've been involved in that project since the beginning. It is a very, it has been a very challenging project. There's only a few plants like that in the state of California. I think maybe only two, but staff can correct me. It's very cutting edge. The permitting process has been challenging. So part of the, there's been inherent difficulties in the complexity of the project. And we had some rather significant staff turnover over the course of it. I don't know if there may be other contributing issues, but I know those two are factually the case. And I don't mean to, you know, to be making excuses or anything, but that's, that's been quite a complex project for staff to.
You know, that's satisfactory. We don't need to get Mr. Bolt involved. So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second, I mean, go ahead.
I'll second the motion. Thank you.
And so now I will ask the city clerk if she's received any comments on the consent calendar items.
Madam Mayor, no comment from the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. And I have three speakers to the consent calendar. Does anybody want to pull something from the consent calendar among the speakers? Okay, so you cannot cede time from one speaker to another unless an item has been pulled. So if Ms. Hungerford wants to speak, you can speak on your own time, but you cannot cede time to Mr. Chernif. Okay, so I just want to make that clear to you. So I will ask also, well, we'll call on the people here in the council first and then we'll go to the Zoom audience on the consent items. So Ms. Hungerford, did you want to speak to the site, any item? Okay, thank you. Peter Chernif. Can you let us know which item you're speaking to?
Another beautiful day in Petaluma. It really was.
Mr. Chernif, can you tell, can you tell us which item you are speaking to?
I have a hard time hearing your muffled voice with that mask on.
Can you tell us what item you are speaking to on the consent calendar?
Oh, number one.
Thank you.
Yeah. And yeah, I just, you know, everybody's kind of taken the mask off. I don't know what the issue is here anymore, but you may do as you wish. So my, my question is, why do we blindly accept the validity of a corrupt court system's rules? When the Constitution clearly says that no one with a title of nobility may hold public office. Lawyers or esquires, that's a nobility title. Our so-called civil grand jury is dominated, manipulated and controlled by a bar lawyer, attorney. And so therefore it is a railroad operation under Saturnalia law, which is another term for Jesuit law. And they have been running these courts under Saturnalia law for a very long time, certainly not constitutional. And so the real, a real true civil grand jury would be based on common law and constitutional issues versus Saturnalia law. And I want to point out also that Officer Jack McLamb, who was Officer of the Year three times in Arizona, would clarify this to you. He did aid in a betting newsletter for 25 years. He was a veteran and a law enforcement officer, fired three times for spending too much time talking to young officers about the Constitution. And so it is, there are a lot of people that believe in the Constitution, including law enforcement. But it seems most of our system is still bent on their knees to the bar association. So I just want to say that Veterans for Peace, the American Indian Movement, the Black Panthers, Special Forces, True Hearted Warriors, Patriotic Chargers, one and all, be now the call in the spirit of Crazy Horse and in the spirit of Sonny Barger.
Mr. Chernif, please stay on topic.
It's, this is the topic because the. It's, it says, this is the topic because the topic is clarifying where you are participating in a deception, whether it's knowingly or unknowingly. And so the people I just mentioned are very clear about the corruption of our courts. And so it is that including the 1,000 Grandmothers Code Pink Extinction Rebellion and DXC now to set everything free by releasing their power in the whole world to hear it. Because I will tell you truly that this morning before daybreak, I had this music in my, in my heart and my mind. It was, it was the Ring of Fire, and it came to me like a dream and like a flash. The words, the music, the Ring of Fire, Johnny Cash. And it was to say thank you to all the truckers as they shut down the entire planet. All the truckers, local and worldwide. They're here to shut down their engines and turn off their ride and no longer be in service to these bankers and their lawyers, their Bar Lawyer Association, which is a complete fabrication of truth and a million rules and regulations. It's not constitutional law. It's not law at all. It's control by Jesuits that, you know, are in harmony with the Nazi situation in this country. And there's good in everything we know.
Thank you very much. Now it's the next speaker's turn to speak. Mr. Chernoff, your time is over.
I see that up there.
So it's over, Mr. Chernoff. Darren Rakusen, it's your turn to speak.
I'm sorry?
I'm not speaking to you.
I can't hear you anyway with that thing on, so I'm trying to, trying to help everybody because you were much more clear without the mask.
Mr. Rakusen, which consent item are you speaking to?
I'll be speaking to items three and four.
Thank you.
It's a tough act to follow, but on item three, I just wanted to see, and actually, Councilmember Healy spoke to my point on four, I believe. But on item three, it looks like the emergency outfall that was put in place at Ellis Creek. And I want to make sure I'm understanding this right. There was emergency outfall due to cracked pipes that was in place in 2017 and is just now having a replacement. And I'm not reading that correctly. I just wanted to see if that was normal. Seems like an emergency being replaced five years later. Anyway, that stood out to me. And then I had the same question about 16 change orders for item four. And I also wanted to mention that on the city's website for the meeting, it did still say 6:30. The agenda packet said six. So I understand if people missed their, their general comment. So to summarize that comment, I'll just say, I do advocate that the city consider expanding the existing tree committee to be an open space and natural resource committee to deal with more city issues and ostensibly attract more members to a committee that does not have a full membership right now. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will close public comment on the consent calendar. Oh, no, I'm sorry. We need to Zoom people. I'm sorry.
The next speaker that we have is Ben Peters. Ben, I'll allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Yes, thank you. I'd also like to speak to item number four. I'd just like to highlight how exciting a project this is. If you track the LCFS market for these Bio CNG credits, it's, you know, really nice to have one of the few plants like this in California. So I, you know, I would think that this facility does receive proper treatment, you know, as an actual council item and presentation. You know, I think that's after it reaches full operational status. For those of you who attended a 350 Petaluma meeting a couple of months back, we talked about some of the high-strength waste feedstock that's available in Petaluma. So a very interesting project to actually take and continually improve. And so on that note, I will say that this is a great opportunity to include the Climate Action Commission. And I encourage other folks in the audience interested in this type of Bio CNG facility to attend the next Climate Action meeting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's, we have, sorry, we have one last commenter. The next speaker that we have is Shockdy Kennedy. Shockdy, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute and begin.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to comment that on the agenda for the many minutes today, it did say August 8th at 6:30 PM and to click here for the, to view the agenda. So assuming that the meeting would start at 6:30 and we'd be able to get our public comment. And then when you click.
Shockdy, just to pause you real quick, do you have a comment on the consent calendar? We're currently on the consent counter. I'll unmute you, and if you have an item on the consent counter that you wish to speak on, you can continue to speak on that. Shockdy, you can unmute yourself.
I'll take my hand down. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. And Madam Mayor, that is the last public commenter we have.
Thank you. With that, we will close public comment on the consent calendar. We have a motion by Healy and a second by Postacay. And I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Barrett?
Yes.
Barnicle?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Postacay?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And now we are on to the workshop part of our meeting this evening. And this is a Sustainable Design Assessment Team program visit and presentation. And Christina Paul will kick off the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It is a pleasure to be with you here this evening. I am going to share my screen and briefly introduce our Sustainable Design Assessment Team that we have with us. We are here to talk through the 15-minute Cities and Livable Streets Sustainable Design Assessment Team that we have visiting us today. The Sustainable Design Assessment Team program is a program of the American Institute of Architects. And very briefly, these are diverse groups of experts that are put together to respond to city and municipality and communities' most thorny issues. So a community can apply to have one of these groups come and visit and propose a particular topic. And then the group is put together specific to each of the topic areas. And we are lucky enough to have one of these groups visiting us over this weekend and today. The focus of the ESTAT team is 15-minute cities and livable streets. I'm sure that they will work on defining that more closely. But essentially, how can community members begin to meet the majority of their needs within a 15-minute walk or bike from their home? And then how can we make streets places for living rather than just places for transportation? How can we make them more pleasant and usable for a wider variety of folks, using a wider variety of methods to get around? The ESTAT team that we have with us is led by Mike Davis. He is a principal at Bergmeier Associates in Boston and has led many of these teams. We're really lucky to have him here with us today. We also have Marion Mucab, who is an architectural designer at Bergmeier. Dr. Luis Aguirre Torres, who's the Director of Sustainability for the City of Ithaca. I want to notice, note that all of the things that I'm saying are amongst other things. So these folks really have a great deal of expertise in their practice areas. We have Abe Farkas, who is a leader in managing catalytic, sustainable, equitable development projects, and specifically thinking about the economic realities of new kinds of development. Aida Curtis, who's a landscape architect from Miami. And then Trung Bo, who is a planner and engineer working across the country on, on livability as it relates to transportation. There were many folks who got together to make the, this event and process a success. Here are over 30 community partners that partnered up with the folks who put this together. There were, it seemed like endless volunteers participating in the event on Friday. And then I know also over the weekend. And we really just want to thank them. I won't read all of their names out. Veronica Olson, who was the chief volunteer, is going to tell us a little bit more about the process. And many of us, I know, participated in the events on Friday. That included a bus tour, interviews, and then an enormous event that I just was so impressed by where over 300 people responded that they were interested to come and talk about the future of the city and think a little bit about planning. So I really congratulate the folks who, who put this together just to ground us in how this event is part of our process and all of the planning efforts that we are undertaking right now. The ESTAT team was originally engaged in 2019. They originally said that they were going to come in 2019, but many things changed in 2020. And they were, they were first able to come in 2022. So they came a few months ago to take an initial tour of Petaluma, to think about what our issues were and how they could put together our team to help us think through them. And then they arrived on Thursday and met with us on Friday, again, for a bus tour and some stakeholder interviews of folks that they wanted to get technical input from. And then there was that wonderful community event. They then worked madly over the weekend to think through what ideas spring to us and are here to present to us today. They are going to be preparing a written report summarizing all of their findings that I believe they're going to be delivering in approximately November. As this fits into our planning process as a whole, the elements that are appropriate in terms of level of detail and so forth for the general plan will be wrapped up into that ongoing process that we're going to be getting into more topics on as we get into the public draft of the housing element and beyond that piece. And then pieces that the community and leadership want to carry forward that are more detailed than is covered in a general plan could be covered or addressed in following planning, planning efforts.
Hey, Christiane, this is the moderator. I just want to remind you to slow down a little bit for the translators that are having trouble trying to keep up. Thank you.
I will do even better and stop. So that's it for me. I am going to hand this over to Veronica Olson. Again, our most, you know, one of the very wonderful volunteers and one of the folks who was key in putting this effort together.
Good evening, Council, community, ESTAT team, city staff. I just have a few words to say about this process. I just want to thank the AIA from all of us on the Steering Committee for choosing Petaluma for this project. And thank you so much for the opportunity and also sending such an amazing team. And your leadership and expertise and energy has been evident since you, since we started engaging. And the work has been tremendous, including city, I mean, staff from the AIA, Paula Copa and Aaron Simmons. We, we went through a few iterations over two years. So we were, they were just always there to support our efforts. And I'd like to also extend thanks to the, the City of Petaluma and city staff who worked with us on renegotiating what we're trying to do and how it can fit into the general plan because of the timing. And I'd like to just say thank you again to the city manager and staff for providing the vessel for a lot of these things to happen. I know we have a time constraint. And I, I would like to also just thank the volunteers and our ESTAT Steering Committee for all of the hard work and dedication. And I am so excited to introduce Mike Davis and his team, our team for the Petaluma ESTAT. And take it away, Mike.
I am sorry to interrupt. Just really quickly, Aaron had a really good reminder. And I'm sorry, I was so excited and talking too fast. If, yeah, so if folks can pause even just between sentences so that the translators can catch up, that's really appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Veronica and Christina. You just did the first five minutes of our presentation for us, so you've saved us some time. We're going to try to do this in 45 minutes. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the Petaluma City Council. We are very happy to see many of you at our stakeholder meetings. Counselor McDonald, Fisher, and Postacay, and Barnicle. And I'm sure of the almost 100 participants on this Zoom chat, several of you attended the stakeholder meetings. Petaluma has an extraordinarily talented and dedicated citizenry. We are proud of being able to serve you. So again, my name is Mike Davis. I'm an architect in private practice from Boston, Massachusetts. And I think all of the details of the ESTAT process have been covered. So let's just jump right to, we're going to let the team members self-introduce. And I'm just going to hand this right over to Trung Bo. Trung, you're up.
Thank you, Mike. And thank you, Petaluma City Council, for inviting us to chat through what we learned and observed and what we think might take Petaluma to the next level and meeting exceeding goals that you, that you have communicated. So we're going to, we're going to go through quite a bit of content, starting with, with mobility. And so I want to speak to reimagining what mobility might look like in Petaluma. So on the next slide, can, you know, what if we had this grid of tree-lined streets across the city? And not just the local residential streets, and not just the collectors, but what about the arterials too, right? We expect a lot from our arterial streets, but they tend to also introduce a lot of problems as it relates to vehicle miles traveled, carbon emissions, safety, right, pavement. And so what I want to do in the next few minutes is talk through what I think might be some solutions to help you as a city and your partners get to these really, really ambitious goals around climate resiliency, carbon neutrality, safety, equity, and VMT reduction. So on the next slide, I think that there are going to be three big ideas for, for making mobility and transportation better in Petaluma and more inclusive, inviting for residents, visitors, and folks that work in Petaluma. So you will see eventually in the report 13 fairly discreet recommendations, but they kind of all fall into one of these three buckets, and they're, they're connected to. But what I'm going to do is I'm not going to talk through all 13. I'm only going to talk through five, and I'm realizing that I'm also talking too fast. So I'm going to try to slow down, but this is just really exciting stuff. And we're really excited to tell you about what we observed. So to start with moving barriers, right? So when we think about walking, bicycling, and using transit, if there is one big barrier or many small barriers, maybe it's a scary intersection. Maybe it's unreliable transit. Maybe it's, it's a, it's a crack in the sidewalk and someone's using a wheelchair and they just can't get over it. Those are the types of things that make it really hard for people to, to be able to and want to walk, bike, or use transit. It's easy to drive in Petaluma. Parking is free. It's, it's easy to get around in the car, but it's not so easy for everybody to, to walk, bike, or use transit. So the first thing I want to talk about is fixing Washington Street. And so this is something that came up in the public and something that was really glaring, obvious thing to, to me. I, I understand that there are a lot of trade-offs to consider. But on the next slide, I want to show you what, what Washington Street could look like. Right now, it's two lanes in each direction. There's a center, center-left turn lane. There's, there's a sidewalk for, for most of the corridor, but the sidewalk is right up next to, right up next to the travel lanes. It's, it's not an inviting place for, for people who want to bike or, or walk. So what if, what if it were tree-lined? What if it were narrower? What if it were easier to cross Washington Street? I think that if, if you're really going to reach carbon neutrality by 2030, if you're really going to, to reach Vision Zero in line with Sonoma County's Vision Zero Plan by 2030, you've got to fix Washington Street. So that's the first, that's the first sort of big idea. On the next slide, I want to speak to, to considering the mobility constraints around, around the, the barriers, the big barriers in, in Petaluma. So I always think about them with the, the big three Rs. So there are roads, rivers, and rail. And when it comes to the roadways in Petaluma, this is consistent with what we're envisioning for Washington Street. What if we narrowed these big roadways that are high-speed and high-volume? And there's a, you know, lots of exhaust and lots and lots of pavement. What if we reimagined what those streets could look like to reduce them being barriers for active transportation? So on the next slide, I'll move on to creating connections. So this is in tandem with removing those barriers. But the, the idea around making active transportation and transit easier is to consider how we're prioritizing space, right? So we, we have limited resources. We only have so much funding, so much money. We only have so much time, and we only have so much space. So on the next slide, what if we reimagine? What if we reimagined and and thought through, hey, you know, we're dedicating this amount of pavement um to the, the movement, the mobility. And the parking, the storage of automobiles. What if we rethought that and considered uh reallocating space to the movement of people, right? So the, the movement of people rather than, than the movement of cars. Um, the next thing I'll, I'll mention is uh this is, this isn't actually something that came up during our community event that much um on, on Friday night. But I want to talk about transit and and the reason is because um there might have been folks who use Petaluma Transit. That weren't there on Friday night. So it didn't get brought up as, as something that was a real priority, but I think it depends on who you talk to in your community. And it just so happens, I think that the folks that, that were there on Friday night, they, they didn't mention transit because, because maybe they don't use uh Petaluma Transit or they don't use the other. Um, uh partner transit uh agency services. So I would really encourage uh the city of Petaluma to uh increase their reliability and frequency. Of transit. Um, it's, it's an equity issue. It's a racial equity issue. It's a socioeconomic equity issue. Uh, transit is going to be really important to uh to transforming transportation in Petaluma. And then I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna say one last thing uh on, on this, on this next slide, uh which is to consider building out the framework. So. Um, there's some great bones that Petaluma has in terms of mobility and transportation, and I think that we can um build on that and we, we can do a lot more. One thing that I'll mention, uh at, at least in this presentation, is that uh the street design standards, I, I think, I think can use some revisions. So on this next slide here. I, I was surprised to see that the, the standard street templates uh were from nineteen ninety six. A lot has changed in the world of street design um uh in, in the last several decades. Uh, as it pertains to making walking and biking more attractive, making it safer and making it more comfortable. So we have some quick ideas for. Uh, making uh the, the street design and construction standards more friendly and more conducive to uh people walking and biking. So. With that, thank you so much for your time. I'm gonna hand it off to you, Aida.
Thank you, Trung, and uh my name is Aida Curtis. I am from Miami, landscape architect. And I will be talking to you about creating connectivity. Um, and as we look into creating these. Um, adaptation to climate change and um and looking at cities bringing in more nature into the urban environment. We have to look at history. We have to look at the, the, what was there before and we have to look at it with a certain uh level of respect. Um, this image that we are showing right now um is an image that um talks about what used to be within the Petaluma watershed. And at one point, the, the tidal wetlands covered sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand acres in the lower Petaluma River. Um, and we had non-tidal wetlands that occupied about eleven. Thousand acres in the watershed. Um, but we know that development and uh. Dredging, straightening up the river, uh altered the native ecosystem. And in fact, the tidal wetlands have decreased. Uh, by approximately fifty eight percent in the past nineteenth century. Um, we also know from, from historical data that we've gathered um that the non-tidal wetlands. Again, through development have decreased um eighty four percent as a result of urban development. So when we talk about connectors, one of the first things we did is we went back to those historical areas and we started mapping. The existing creeks and the existing patterns that, that we noticed from the aerials. So you can see the existing creeks um that are bordered um with uh tree-lined. And those are uh examples such as the Lynch Creek Trail. And what we are creating is that we are creating a. Interconnected system of trails and boulevards that will be connecting to parks and open spaces in the city. And ultimately really directing people to the river, the centralized river. And, and it's not like. You don't know what a river is, but it's. Really not exhibited or not part of what Petaluma should be. Um, in these green corridors and these green connectors, um as Trung talked about, um. We would be decreasing the lane widths and in turn reallocating the space to uh the side areas for. A, a pathway that would be multipurpose, approximately fourteen, twelve to fourteen feet. Uh, bioswales that would collect stormwater, redirect the stormwater uh into the bioswale. We would clean the water before it went down to the aquifer. We could convey it down to the river. Um, and we also would have pollinator gardens, so it would be a biodiverse corridor. Next. So. In ultimate, our ultimate um. Solution includes uh twenty nine miles of green quarters in just this illustration alone. Uh, if you extrapolate the length of the quarters and, and what the normal spacing of trees. This accounts to approximately twelve thousand new trees being planted in Petaluma, which translate to a carbon intake. Of two hundred and sixty four thousand pounds per year. That's a significant amount in just this particular initiative. We would be increasing the walkable and the share and the bikeable space in Petaluma for about approximately forty two acres. Um, we would be decreasing the space dedicated to cars for approximately forty five percent. Um, uh ninety four acres, a total of ten percent citywide. Um, and would be decreasing the impervious surface uh by fifty two acres, which means turning. The remaining areas into perviable, permeable surfaces, which alleviates the storm island effect and helps recharge our aquifer. Next. We heard you loud and clear. We understand the need for trees and one of the things that we need to understand that trees are living things. And what we have above ground is only a fragment of what the tree is composed. Trees have roots. And generally speaking, the root system is just as large as the canopy that you want it to be, and you want the trees to really develop that healthy root system. You want the trees to be able to have the amount of uh a spread that they need in terms of the roots so that they can, in fact, acquire the nutrients necessary. To thrive and to succeed and to provide that stability that uh enables them to withstand storm systems. So bottom line is the trees need room to grow. They need loose, good soil. And uh we know for a fact that native trees, using native trees indigenous to the Petaluma area. Um, is the ideal situation because they are adapted to rain and drought. Um, there are many systems available currently and there are systems like uh modular cell systems or structural soils that assist in the um creation of spaces for trees. Uh, one of the other things that we want to talk about is um, we know that our climate emergency is um, is very um urgent. We know that the signif- the southeast portion of the city is significantly vulnerable. And what you are seeing in this graphic is the light green area is an area that historically was tidal wetlands, marshlands. And we know that further south in the Petaluma River, there are already these tidal salt, salt marshlands. So what we are aiming to do is we are aiming to once again connect these systems, connect these systems for efficient operation and provide for flood protection. Next. So our proposal, in fact, is to restore these tidal marshlands, to reclaim areas. To bring areas back into the natural conditions. And creating this multi-benefit wetland restoration strategies that in fact. Would be interconnected with the boulevards that we spoke about, would, but would be creating a central park for Petaluma. A central riverfront park, which would be adding twenty acres of parkland to the city of Petaluma. And that parkland could be uh open fields uh that are floodable for recreation of uh multi-generational. Uh, multi-ethnicity families. Uh, the park could serve to provide a cooling centers such as splash pads, which has become very popular nationwide. In this heat island, uh we could uh uh these use recirculated water, so they're very easy to operate. We could add a nature plays bay playgrounds, which are very popular to introduce to kids the free play and the uh value and the. Value of our nature, uh indigenous nature of the area. The riverfront park would add twenty six acres of restored tidal marshland, very critical ecosystem for the river. It would allow the river uh opportunities to clean itself through the uh, through the permeation, through plants into the river. Um, and obviously we would provide an interconnected system of boardwalks for enjoyment of the wetland areas with overlooks. And such as the uh sunset and sunrise overlooks that are provided. So in essence, what we are bringing to Petaluma is we are bringing a system of interconnected boulevards. Um, that are meant to uh provide sustainability and restore the natural environment. Next. Mike.
I'm here. I'm here. Unmute. Start video. Nope. Sorry. Yes, I'm here. Start video. Um. Um, Miriam and I are going to tag team the next section, so uh I will, so I said I'll self-introduce. Mike Davis, uh architect, uh team leader from the city of Boston and Miriam.
Hi, I'm Miriam, an architectural designer from Boston, and I have. Amongst other things, I have been diligently working on all the renderings that you're seeing today. So if I stumble on my words, that's because I'm tired.
Yes, yeah, we, we're all pretty, we're all pretty shag this part. Okay, next slide, please. Uh, so here's what we did. Uh, we, the, the architects took on the challenge of the fifteen minute city. He said, what would, what would Petaluma look like if the, all the residents of Petaluma could walk fifteen minutes to all the, all the, the services and and functions they need? Um, so here's what we did. First, we looked for these mixed-use zones in the city. We didn't find uh a mixed-use zone for every neighborhood that would hold all the functions, but we have a lot of good ideas for you. Uh, we don't, we did not displace any existing house. This was a principle for us, you know, housing sites, uh we can't, we don't touch. And uh when looking at these development sites, we focused on first on. Health and human service functions. We'll talk about those when we get to them. Uh, we focused on affordable housing. And we focused on employment opportunities. Uh, we heard that there was, that there are thousands of people that leave Petaluma every day to go to work and thousands of people that. Come into Petaluma every day to go to work. That's a great source of carbon emissions. If we could find more affordable housing and more. More industry, more jobs, businesses within the city, now it helped balance that, help, help reduce both of those numbers. So. Uh, so these are the, this is the base map we used. And what we did, the first thing we did is we overlaid on the base map. Next, please. Uh, some of the, some of this, 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 the uh, the environmental indicators and, and social justice indicators that you've done, that you've surveyed. Uh, this map is where the, the heat islands overlap with the greatest pollution impacts. And what this let us do is prioritize. Some of the sites we found in these neighborhoods. And next, please. Uh, the next overlay is a, a variety of different uh socioeconomic disadvantages such as housing vulnerability index, housing cost burden uh and, and low income. And, and we, so we layered up all these, all these factors and these, so before we started looking for sites, so when we found sites. We would know which ones were the most, were the most important. So next, please. Uh, first, I, I do want to say that we don't, we do know that Petaluma does have an existing uh node uh of. Of commercial mixed-use activity, uh the historic downtown. But as you could see that, that from that radius, that's a fifteen-minute walking radius. Um, most of the residences are really not within fifteen minutes by foot of the historic downtown. So that was, that was our work. So. So what we did is we laid these little, these little circles, these fifteen-minute walking circles. All over the map and said, how many nodes would it take for us to get most of ninety five percent of the residential neighborhoods within fifteen minutes of one of these development zones? Uh, and uh, and we got, we got most of the city covered, but what that left us with is five, no, nine nodes. Next, please. Nine nodes uh that we, that, that uh Miriam and I then scrambled out to take a look at and say, where can development. Activity happen in these nodes. As I said, some of them were already in, had already had, had start. There was some commercial activity there already. Some of them. Uh, we had to look really hard and they didn't, we didn't, some of them aren't as fully developed as others, but I think this gives you a sense for what this would look like. The fifteen-minute city would have this kind of. Uh, this kind of number of decentralized development zones. Ultimately, so we're gonna go, we're gonna tag team these. We're gonna talk about these nodes one at a time, uh and Miriam is gonna go first. And we're gonna, I'm sorry, we'll start, we'll start with the, 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 the east end. Then go to the west end and then do two that are in the center city.
Thank you, Mike. So um we'll start off with an easy one, node five, Leghorn Marketplace. Uh, this is, you, I'm sure you guys already know about Leghorn Park. It's nestled in the college neighborhood. We stumbled upon this hidden gem when we were out scouting for our nodes and it's the Leghorn Horn Marketplace. Has a ton of amenities already available and it's right next to the park. So there's. A safe way. There's a gr- uh the grocery store, there's the restaurant and office space and there's potential for more. The only thing that is missing from this. Node is uh a better approach, more visibility. Um, and we believe that Trung's new street scape design is really going to help make this node more visible and more pedestrian-friendly. Um, and accessible. Um, Mike.
Okay, um, next, moving, moving east through the east end, we come to node, uh this node at Luchesi Park, note four. Uh, and this is, this was a hard place for us to find a development zone. There weren't a lot of vacant sites here. Um, but we did find is a boys and girls club uh that was in a, in a, in a not, not optimal building that could use some, they could use some, some attention. It could be, it could. Be turned into a uh multi-floor building uh with the boys and girls clubs that is tenant. Uh, we also could provide down the street. There's a ball field. Uh, we could provide um improved facilities for the ball field and turn some of the, some of the concession stand into storefronts facing of the street. And then around the corner, the other side of Luchesi Park, there's a, a, a rattle large parking lot. That we're imagining could be a, something like a library or something on McDonald Street. And I think that's, I think that's, I think this neighborhood would appreciate having. So. Next, click, please. Yeah, these are just, just some photos. There's a, the Boys and Girls Club up at the top. There's a, easy to imagine, this is a, this is, is a larger building with more of a street presence and then. Then down there at below is the ball field. It's easy to imagine, uh, you know, commercial use, a concession use actually turned to face the street so the public can use it. Uh, even when there is a, a ball game happening, so. Mary.
Uh, okay, so I'm finding an appropriate site for this was a bit difficult because this is a larger residential neighborhood in the Adobe. Neighborhood and um we, but we managed to find a small vacant corner site, which we've placed a. Mixed-use office building on, which could fulfill some of the community's social needs such as childcare. Uh, social services and healthcare. And as you can see here, we're trying to really hone in on this idea of creating active streetscapes and active storefronts. For the neighborhood.
Next, so the last of the, of the east side sites, uh we actually got very excited about. We think this was a real, this is a real home run here. Um, by Castle, Casa Grande High School is a very large underutilized lot um next to two high schools. Um, and it's about the size of the, of the lot that the, that the Leghorn Park is, Leghorn Plaza is on. So. Uh, you could put a grocery store here. This was one of the sections of the city that has very poor access to, to grocery stores. So. A grocery store could go here, um smaller retail buildings. Uh, not parking, not visible from the street, strange from the street, access to green space. And then um the real bonus here would be an opportunity to improve that streetscape on Casa Grande with a kind of a, you know, a, a, a storefront. Buildings with a second floor office space. It could be, you know, tax preparation, uh lawyers, you know, it, it, it's English is a second language. But the real benefit here is to the street. So I want to show you the next shot, the next, the next image, please. This is the current. Look, this is what Casa Grande looks like now. To the left, you see this, this large underutilized lot and the sketch that you're gonna see next. Like boom, this is taken from the same place, the same spot. So instead of standing in the middle of traffic, you're actually standing on the sidewalk. With a, with a, with a, with a planted buffer on one side, the activation zone on the other side. And I mean, who, who wouldn't want the neighborhood to look like this? I think this is, this is quite beautiful. Next.
So um now we're moving on to the west side. This, we're proposing a node at Petaluma Magnolia. We noticed that there's already a lot of uh good potential here. It has a grocery store, Lucky's and. Many restaurants. Um, however, it does have a lot of underutilized industrial sites uh that you can see in this yellow zone. Um, that these could be used for further development, create density um through housing and. Potentially include a neighborhood health center. We would also like to mention that we find that the greenery's are, don't have to be an eyesore. They can really be celebrated as part of Petaluma's rich history. So it's something that we can use.
Next, yeah, next site. Next, yeah, next site, next slide, yeah, there.
Here's, so you see. Some of these underutilized sites and the gray, greenery is a really cool thing that I think that we could develop further and celebrate.
Exactly, good, okay. Moving again, moving a little east on the west side, we come to node three Western and Baker. Now, this is, this is the, one of the ones that is very close to being a little, little activity, no, little multi-use activity already. There's, there's good restaurants here, there's a little shop. The Creamery is here and there's a lot of, they're industrial sites too. And, and we don't, we, we like industry in the city. We don't, we don't, because those, that's jobs, but. The idea is if we, if we designate this zone over to the right and say this is a possible. Interim planning overlay district and we, when we increase the FAR, that, you know, the kind of development potential on this site. Then, then one of the, one of the people on these sites now, like maybe the Creamery could say. Let's, let's, let's develop a bigger building here, let's develop a building that would have, you know, maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's incubator office space. Maybe it's another active storefront on the street. And so that might look like, next sketch please. I'm sorry, yeah, next, this, this is, I think you all know this neighborhood really well. You can see at the upper right, that, that corner of the. Of the creamer is, is a, is a blank corner right now. And that doesn't have to be, it could be something more interesting. So next, next, there's the sketch. I mean, if this is, you could see a, you know, a commercial storefront. On that, which would actually kind of bring all of this, the, the, the commercial activity on western, on, on western into. Into kind of focus and then an upper, then a building with a couple of floors on top that could be, as I said, either. Expanded offices or manufacturing facilities or incubator space or kind of startup space for new, you know, for new businesses. Next, Mary.
So node three B, from our research, we found that this neighborhood happens to fall in a food, food desert. Since there's no place for residents. To find, buy food within a half mile of their homes. So since we don't want to displace any homes and this is mostly residential, pretty dense neighborhood, we came up with a more creative solution to address this. We are proposing McNear Park as a destination for food truck festivals, pop-up markets. Along with enlarging and improving the existing rec center. And we also, next slide please. We'd also like to propose a concession stand and converting some of the space underneath the bleachers. We, we could have a street-facing concession stand located right here. There's plenty of potential at this site to further develop. It's already being used a lot from what we saw as we. Went through the neighborhoods.
Right, excellent, okay. So now we get to our two, our two midtown sites. And these are the bigger, these are the big sites. These are the sites we're focusing on. More on affordable housing and more on mixed use development. Now, I want to say there are a lot of housing sites in Petaluma. We did not look at all of them. You know, we've got, we've got places where you can get a couple hundred units, but that wasn't our focus, was just finding all the housing. So. So this is, what's the imperative here, two imperatives here. One is to make this traffic circle by the hotel into a lively, vital. Urban node with, with a tremendous amount of activity and, and uses. It's also an opportunity to connect. To, to the, to the green corridor and get us, get us access to the, to the restored wetlands. So. This, this space could connect right to that, that green corridor we talked about. So. And the bridge is absolutely critical. The bridge over the river is absolutely critical because that residential neighborhood across the river. Has no access to one of these commercial nodes if this bridge doesn't happen. They're, they're literally cut off. From, they're, they don't participate in the fifteen minute city if that bridge doesn't happen. So. Next, yeah, this is the view, you all know this view. And here's what we're proposing next. So there's the, you can see there's three and four story of development that rings, that, that rings this open space, turns it into an open space, actually not just a traffic circle. And, you know, kind of busy commercial activity on the ground floor, you know, offices and or residences on the second floor, second and third and fourth floor. Next.
Oh, last but not least, we save the most important site for last, and this is node one. The intersection of Washington and Lakeville. This is the gateway to the city. This is what people first see when they enter Petaluma before they. You know, see. Downtown Petaluma, which is absolutely gorgeous. So we have all these underutilized sites, we go on to the next page real quick. Yep, we have these underutilized sites that can be used for mixed use buildings and create active street fronts. We are proposing, if you switch, this is what it could look like. If we develop those plots, we created these buildings with mixed use functions. Commercial at the bottom. Providing these active streets fronts really makes, helps mom and pop stores thrive because people are walking and then. Revitalizes this whole area and we can reengage the rest of the green corridor and the river. By. Doing some of these moves in this area.
Great, thanks, Mary. Now, normally at this point in the, in the S staff process, we, we would hand this, the project over, the presentation over to. The, the person who is gonna help explain how we're gonna pay for all this stuff and make it happen. That's Abe Ferguson. I think he's on the call, but he unfortunately is still at home in Portland. You know, recovering from COVID. But instead, we have a special treat for you, a unique expertise. That you'll want to hear from. So I'm gonna hand it over to Luis, take it away, Luis.
Thank you very much, Mike, and thank you everybody for having us, hosting us this weekend. I think it is. You know, it is a beautiful exercise. We're talking about rescue nature, you know, the watershed, the riverfront, when we're talking about. Imagining mobility, designing fifteen minute nodes, you know, we're talking about transforming a city that is already beautiful into something that could be not only beautiful, but also clean. We go to the next one. One of the things that I, I really love about Petaluma is, is how they are, how you are integrating everything, you know, this is. This is from the operating capital improvement budget. And basically you are conceding that. If we don't address the economic shock of the pandemic at the same time that we. Provide workforce stabilization and investment in areas that we have disinvested before. And if we don't tackle climate change at the same time, they were not gonna make it anywhere. And that is one, but next one. The, the other thing that is, that is fantastic is that. The recognition that we're dealing with climate change, but we're also dealing with historical inequities, with economic inequality. With social injustice. So we're dealing with something that we call today climate justice. And the city decided to, you know, abide by Senate Bill one thousand and, and. Perform an analysis on environmental justice next please, and identifying some of the areas that might be categorized as disadvantaged communities. But in that analysis, we saw that there are also opportunities to even improve on what you have already. Which once again, I need to say is, is much more advanced than most municipalities in the entire country, not only California. So one of the, the opportunities comes from the undercounting in the US census, you know, the, right now it's been recognized that. Across entire country, there's a five percent undercounting of the Latino population. However, in California, it's estimated to be even higher than that. At the same time, if we, if we think about the undercounted population and where they, they live, we can see that is in areas of high pollution and, and trafficking, traffic impacts. And finally, in, in the methodology that you use to do the environmental justice analysis, doing some sort of reverse engineering. We saw that, you know, there was an opportunity to introduce new factors that didn't exist a couple of years ago, that didn't exist in two thousand eighteen. But today we can see that if we were to introduce the long-term effects of COVID, including long COVID or, or the need to provide. Care to somebody or, or receive support in, in part of the methodology, we'll be able to see perhaps different results, next one please. And, and so the recommendation that we have is, why, why don't we address the undercounting? And, and they introduce that and see if we can obtain different results when we do this analysis. But the other thing that, that we are recommending is, what if we were to address economic inequality at the same time? Petaluma has one of the largest economic inequality i- in the entire region. And, you know, that is not a terrible thing, but we need to recognize it and we need to work with it. So a lot of the time it's not about.
Speaking, can you please slow down a little bit for our translators?
Sure.
Thank you.
So a lot of the time is, is also about. Working with those differences rather than the actual numbers or the facts. What if we were to work with the standard deviation? What if we were to talk about? How distant is the average income in this particular neighborhood from, from the median? For example. Uh, next one please. If, if we were to do that, we have the idea that it is possible that if we were to look at traffic impacts. Groundwater threats, we were to look at particular matter or cleanup sites. And we were to identify where the Latino population or, and other minorities concentrate. We would, as opposed to the current analysis, identify a new area that might be considered a disadvantaged community. This is just food for thought, this is a recommendation for you to take into account. Next one please. Also, we, we did some reverse engineering to the greenhouse gas inventory. Your greenhouse inventory is about half a million metric tons of CO2 equivalent. And most of those emissions come from transportation, which is similar to the rest of the country. And some of it comes from the energy that we use at home and our businesses. Next one please. But one of the things that we can see is, one. We consolidated electricity with natural gas in our accounting. And, and probably if we were to separate those, you know, we could see different results. We're also. In, in, in trying to understand how the, the greenhouse gas inventory was performed, we see that there's a, an averaging. Of carbon emissions factor. And, and the reality is that because of the variety that you have, you know, with, with Sonoma Clean Power and the different options that they offer. You know, it is important to know who's obtaining energy from where, so we can do a more precise. Greenhouse gas inventory for electricity. And then also, there is one thing that has happened in the last few years. You know, methane leakage, for example. When we produce, when we actually extract natural gas, we process natural gas, we transfer natural gas. That is actually more damning than anything that we can imagine. So right now we need to take that into account and that was not part of the greenhouse gas inventory. Next one. And, and the reason I think it could be important is mostly because we can strategize very differently when we're to take that into account. So one of the recommendations that we make is, what if we were to separate electricity from natural gas? What if we were to take into account these leakages? And if we do that, we actually took a stab at it and we saw. That the numbers would change. We would see that transportation, instead of being sixty-seven percent of emissions, it actually is fifty-six percent. And, and this is an important recommendation because when we talk about the emissions in buildings, we see that it is methane, which is much more powerful greenhouse gas. Compared to carbon emissions. Next one please. And, you know, we always make this joke when we're talking about this type of thing. It's not about, it's, it's, it's carbon more than charcoal that we're interested in. And with that, we're trying to say. It's not that simple. So when we talk about mitigation and sequestration. It is all interconnected. And don't worry, I'm not gonna take you through this, let's go to the next one. What I want to show you is, we don't talk about necessarily always mitigating carbon emissions. We need to start by minimizing energy intensity and that is, we need to reduce the amount of energy for every. Unit of GDP that we use in the city. Then we need to reduce the amount of carbon that every unit of energy has. And then we need to eliminate. Carbon emissions. If we were to follow that approach and we were to look at emissions as a whole, next one please. We would see that, that things could be different. For example, if we were to talk about, about buildings. What if the city decided to retrofit and electrify all buildings? That is, what if we were to address energy intensity? Energy efficiency and what if we were to eliminate carbon emissions by replacing? Anything that uses natural gas to heat our homes, heat our water. Or, or cooking, for example. And if we were to focus on those areas where there is the highest housing burden or where there is the lowest income. We would actually bring something different to those communities and we will advance the goal of decarbonization. Next one. And if we look at transportation, which may seem, is, is countering duty because transportation. It could be fifty-four percent or sixty-seven percent of the emissions. But if we were to look at it, we would see that. We could, we should start reimagining mobility, creating connectivity, integrating different forms of transportation. If we were to address efficiency before we think about electric vehicles, at the same time, you know, we can make progress. But if we were to address that. We would make much quicker progress towards the carbonizing the city. Next one please. But when we do that, we need to remember. We need to think about infrastructure. We were to electrify an entire city. We need to work on the distribution grid. Otherwise, honestly, the city will catch fire. We need to think about the infrastructure that we have and whether is the infrastructure that we. We need to look at how much data and what we are gonna use that data for. So, so to make sure that, you know, this is a resilient implementation. Next one. We need to think about workforce. And I'm so glad that you are considering workforce stabilization, but the reality is, we need to work on, on developing new training. For people that want to be part of the future economy. And we need to take into account those groups that are not necessarily part of the census, but that could be part of this. And finally, we need to look at regional cooperation and the development of those support services that will help people be part of this. Next one please. Finally, just a couple of recommendations. From the financing point of view, it is important to create partnerships with private. Capital and philanthropic institutions. Next one. And in terms of resiliency, it is also important to think. Climate change is here, we need to adapt. COVID is here and we need to adapt. So both adaptation to climate change and economic resilience. Resiliency is some of the most important adjustments that we'll have to make to our economy. Thank you very much. Back to you, Mike.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't, oops, I don't know if we have time for questions or not, but like two closing remarks. First. I, this was a lot of material. We brought, we brought the A team to Petaluma. You will get all of this and more in the report, including Abe Ferguson's recommendations on, on. How to, how to make all this stuff real. But that report is, will have, we is not quite ready yet, we'll have it ready. It'll be announced, be launched on the AIA website for not just you, but anybody, any city that wants to learn from what we're recommending. And my closing thoughts are. You gave us an ambitious agenda. You, you set an ambitious agenda for us, before us. And, and we are supporting it, we're excited about it. This is where the American Institute of Architects wants to be at the intersection of. Of the climate crisis and social justice. And we think that. If you want a beautiful equitable fifteen minute carbon neutral city. These are the kinds of transformations that, that you're, that you should be thinking about. So again, we're. Very pleased to be here, very proud to be in service to the, to the city of Petaluma. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, and we don't clap. Thank you very much for that presentation. And I do believe we have time for questions, so, both from the council and our community. So I hope you can. Stick around, at least some of you. And one thing I didn't hear was a proposed date for the release of this report.
Erin, if you're listening, can you tell us what you think the date might be, release of the report?
Yeah, so the team is going to go back to their respective homes and finalize their recommendations and the narrative text that will go into the report. We're hoping to hopefully have it to you, probably within the next three to four weeks is our goal. And we will try. Very hard to succeed in that goal. So I would just say, stay tuned and we'll, we'll let you know when it's, when it's up on the web.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, I'm gonna ask our council member, first of all, I want to thank you all for. A lot of information and I'm wondering. Whether or not these slides are going to be available to us before the report or are that you're going to use them in your report?
Yes, we will definitely make this presentation that you just watched available to the community. We'll make sure it's posted somewhere where everyone can access it. And so, you know, a lot of the recommendations that you'll see in the report are just gonna build off of this. So you do have a lot of tools to be working with already. And we would encourage you to start thinking through what that might look like, but we'll, the, the report will just kind of be an embellishment of the slides you just saw.
Thank you very much. So now I'm gonna turn it over to our council and see if there are any comments or questions. And council member King, since you're remote, I'm gonna ask you if you would like to kick it off.
Thank, thank you. I really don't have a ton of questions other than this. I know that this is just a presentation, we're gonna get a final report. My comment really is, you know, a lot of what was presented is very interesting. Certainly, to a lesser extent. There has been attempts here to try to do that in different parts of the city, through different projects. And this really isn't a question, it's really a kind of rhetorical question in some respects. Is, you know, in looking at everything that was presented, which is, you mentioned it was big. I would call it billions big, you know, if you're gonna do all this. So. I'm kind of looking to see. At least for some, to some degree, I'm gonna put this in a. In a kinder light, but you know, what, what can we do in, in reality? In some of these things, because a lot of this is gonna involve private sector money. In fact. You know, the majority of it will. We're talking about concession stands, someone's gonna have to operate that. Some green grocers, they're gonna have to have businesses that come in and, and agree. To, to take the risk of running a business and things like that. So. I mean, those are my comments. I, I certainly agree with, you know, and would support a lot of the. I, I certainly agree with, you know, and would support a lot of the, the general proposals, certainly on tree planting. I'd like to see us improve bike lanes. You know, and the one thing I can comment on is the greenhouse, greenhouse gas section, which I thought was very interesting. And the big dilemma there, which I think is one area where I do have a little bit of knowledge, is while we have electrified or required electrification on new buildings in Petaluma, is getting the old buildings transformed, and that's an enormously expensive process to reduce the, the internal, not just the electric, but the internal natural or methane gas use. So I'm looking forward to seeing the final report, and that's about it for now. But I do appreciate your time tonight. Very interesting presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you very much. Yeah, you certainly set out a bold, ambitious program here. But I, but I think the only way we made our twenty, thirty goals is by getting out of comfort zone. And so this should be provocative. Everything you talk about, it has to be seen as coming from the fifteen-minute neighborhood, because currently, our, while our head is in the right place, our, our seat is in a car, and that needs to change. Like, my first thought when you said Lucchese improvements was, the parking lot there is not big enough for the current farmer's market. And we have, you know, no central place for gathering, large gatherings. And then that led me to the obvious next, where should we have a big, large gathering place? But also, how do we get, how do we get our minds out of our, you know, how do I get our bodies up where our minds are, which is not in our car? So, you know, implementing these, I noticed all the east side sites were on public lands, and the west side sites were all private ownership lands. And so it's a real opportunity, if it's public lands, to facilitate the land idea. And then your, Councilman King's point still real about getting private money into, to, to, to actually do the structures. And, and we all know that no development happens in short time at all. So I think I'd love to have an implementation plan that has the, the more immediate projects, like the McNear Park truck, truck idea. And I don't know if that's really a true fifteen-minute, but it's a start to put, you know, diverse things into a neighborhood that's not diverse commercially currently. You, you mean, you had tons of good provocative stuff in this, that, you know, we ought to be implementing. Some, I think, as noted, are already within our eyesight, like conversion and retrofit programs from natural gas. I know that if you do an electric undergrounding district, the poles stay up until the last person converts their private electrical connection. And the same would be true if we got a natural gas program, we couldn't kill that pipeline in that block till the last house converted. But these are all just points where we need to be ambitious and keep after a program. So I'm, I'm excited about that one. You just have so many, so many good ideas in here. I hope we can get this through the G-PAC, through the Climate Commission, and into adoption as possible. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fisher.
I actually want to start with a question for Trung. Could you talk a little bit more about our public transportation? Because, you know, obviously, the way we're designed and being fairly suburban and the system that we have isn't going to get people onto public transportation. I wonder if you have any brilliant ideas about how we might do that in a more creative and fun way?
Sure. Well, some of it's internal and some of it's external, right? So, so we know from some of the information that came out of the initial stages of the, the general plan update process, that a lot of folks that live in Petaluma don't work in Petaluma. So they, they go somewhere else, and a lot of folks come in. I think it's about twenty-two thousand people come in from outside of Petaluma to work in Petaluma. And we were having dinner the other day, and we're chatting with somebody that, that lives in Windsor, and then commuted in. We asked, we asked him the question, you know, how does he get in to, to Petaluma? And he said he drives, because it just, it isn't convenient and reliable to use transit. So it's really going to take, with, with the three slash four different transit agencies, it's really going to take some coordination to think through making transit more convenient, more reliable, and, and easier to use than, than driving. One of the things that we're going to be recommending is, in addition to the, the smart bike share program, that I believe is, is going to be implemented soon with, with that grant, I, I think that there is a possibility to make it easier to get from the smart station to downtown. It's only about half a mile, maybe a little bit more than that. But if you make it really easy for someone to get off the, the smart rail, and then hump, hop onto a bike or a scooter or something like that to get into downtown, it makes that much more attractive, and it makes it feel like it's actually something that the folks would, would want to do. So there is no silver bullet, other than, other than chance, it just has to be more attractive and more reliable.
So when you're talking about the other transit agencies, we are at the SCTA working on integrating our transit more, and that, that's sort of a work in progress. And so that takes care of the commuter, well, it doesn't take care of it, but yeah, so we're working on that. And I guess the question is, so in and around Petaluma, to get people from one side of town to the other, or around other, other ideas other than like our forty-foot buses, for instance?
I mean, I, I really think that transit is going to be one part of the solution, because the, the permeability between the west side and the east side, it could, could be a lot better, not just with transit, but with, with more across-town connectors, and not just for cars, right, but for people that are walking and biking. So, so it's just, it's going to be an entire, it's going to be a complete multimodal transportation system. And, and, and I got to say, right, you all have some ambitious goals, and that's why we responded with, with an ambitious proposal. And, and, and part of why folks don't use transit is because driving is really easy, and parking is really easy.
Thank you. So that was my question, and I just want to give a huge shout out to Veronica Olson. You know, when she came to me with this in two thousand nineteen, you know, she has not let it go. And she is, she is like a bulldog, and she has led us all through this process and not let us off the hook. And we were glad to be there, right there with her. But I, I say, without her, we wouldn't be in this place, and we wouldn't have had this happen. And, and so I really want to give a big shout out for her, and really thank this team for everything that you've done, and really look forward to your written report. And, and stay ambitious, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Oh, thanks. Also, yes, I can't thank Veronica enough, can't thank the, the assessment team enough. I guess my question piggybacks a little bit on some of the other ones. In being, will you, in your final report, will you be able to help us with where to start in terms of perhaps where we'll get the most bang for a buck type of thing? You know, it's really seems massive to be able to start on everything you're suggesting at once. And I'm wondering, even if not tonight, if you will have any advice in, in that sphere. Thank you.
Counsel, counsel, let me address that one. We, in our dry run for this presentation, we all said, this needs to be the, a very important part of our final report. And, and again, typically, typically Abe would be the one to talk about phasing and how to implement these things. But we absolutely know that that's necessary, and we will deliver that with the report. The, the, what steps can we do, you know, next month with the resources that we have? That will be part of our recommendations, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Healy?
Thank you. Thank you. I, I guess the, the word I would use overall to describe the presentation, presentation is aspirational. And that's kind of a two-edged sword, is complimentary, but it's also unconstrained by all the constraints that those of us in City Hall are dealing with every day of the year. So it, it's a breath of fresh air to see something that isn't constrained by those kinds of constraints. But nevertheless, I particularly like the emphasis on tree cover. That's a place where we can do better. I spent most of this past weekend in Portland, which was experiencing a major heat event, at least by their standards. And there was a lot of talk with people I talked to about tree canopy, especially in the less prosperous eastern parts of the city. And that's something that we can do better on here. I, I note that the older parts of our east side, the older east side neighborhoods, don't have plantar strips. That would, so it makes it more of a challenge to, to introduce tree canopy to the east side. But in the older parts of the east side in particular, I think that's something that is something we should prioritize and do. As, as the final report is prepared, I, I would encourage the team to attempt to ground truth, the viability of some of the things that you're talking about in, in light of some of the more obvious constraints that those of us in the building deal with all the time. I'd point out that, you know, the idea of a neighborhood serving grocery store by Casa Grande High School is, is very intriguing. There actually was a neighborhood serving grocery store by Casa Grande High School forty years ago. It's the same building that's now a gym, in, in the same shopping center with Hector's Pizza and, and those other folks. It couldn't, it couldn't compete with, with larger box grocery stores. People vote with, you know, their dollars. And so that's just how people come to shop. And I don't know if that's something that's trainable or changeable, but you know, these, some of these things have been tried, and they just didn't work. I, I know very much that the public is going to look at this presentation and say, I want that. I get it. There's a lot to like about this thing. But as Councilmember King indicated, a lot of this requires investment by the private sector. And so I'd like to know how much of that is achievable? How much of this can we actually convince the private sector to take on and do? And, and I'm not intending this as a criticism, but to me, some of the presentations seem like a pre-COVID era, pre-Amazon era, new urbanist presentation with all these great pedestrian-friendly neighborhood-serving retail markets. And, and I don't know that, how viable those are going to be going forward. So again, as you prepare the, the final report, please talk about what's achievable, given the realities of, of the post-COVID and post, post-Amazon world. Let's see. And, and in particular, I'd note that you obviously spent a lot of time in our downtown and around the edges of downtown in particular, not far from the core, but very close. We have more vacant retail than I've seen in forty years living here. And in a retail can't survive in storefronts on the edge of downtown, how is it going to survive in these more scattered centers or nodes around the community? So again, I think there needs to be more of a reality check. I know you've got a very talented team. I know you can address this stuff, and I hope that you do. And then another place where I think you need to put some emphasis in the final report, if, if the proposal is to reduce East Washington Street from four travel lanes to two travel lanes, and I didn't, that wasn't exactly said in the presentation, but the graphics certainly said that. To me, that looks like gridlock into a lot of members of the community. That's going to look like gridlock. And I don't want this report to be rejected out of hand by the community because of that issue. So please do a deeper dive on how that kind of a proposal is, is, can, can be achieved without creating gridlock in the community. But, you know, overall, I think, as I said, it's, it's very aspirational. There's a lot of creative thinking here, because we're so far down in the weeds, most of the time, we don't get to think this way. And it is a breath of fresh air. So thank you.
Thank you. So I will just add to that and stay on the retail question. I think the idea of the fifteen-minute city is, or walkable to all the services that you're looking at, is very enticing. And I did notice that there were different services and, and ideas for different areas. But I do think Mr. Healy is right about the retail question. We had the unfortunate votes in the past councils of putting in two huge, you know, seventies-style malls, you know, not that long ago, which I think has led to a lot of the problems that we have right now with our existing retail. And I didn't see any allusion to those malls, those strip malls, in anything that I saw tonight. And, and I do really think that needs to be addressed, because the older malls that existed before these new ones were put in, or shopping centers, whatever you want to call them, you know, are already suffering. And, and, you know, I think there needs to be a real integration of, a little bit more integration, actually a lot more integration, of what you're proposing with what actually exists here, and how one isn't going to negatively impact the other, or, you know, may act as a catalyst to move some of those areas in a new direction. So I just think that that needs to be acknowledged as, as you go forward. But that is not to say that I don't appreciate the, the views that have been presented tonight. So with that, I'm going to go to public comment. And I have one card, what, pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I, I took, I went out of line. I'm sorry. So we have one more council member before we're going to go to public comment. Councilmember Barnacle.
Yeah, I'll put a big stamp on the thank you to Veronica Olson and to the AIA team. The thoughts, my immediate thoughts when I saw that early, the mobility section was one, that's what beautiful cities look like. And places where people want to go visit, people were places, places where people want to live, in particular, the street-lined trees. I love seeing our, our tierals just sort of stamped with, with trees like that. It just warmed my heart. The, the taking space from cars and putting it for people and for plants. The bioswales, water is a huge issue right now. I think it used to be, where is everybody going to park, and what about the traffic? And I think now the number one concern we hear when we approve a project is, where are we going to get the water? You're asking me to stop watering my lawn. So pumping the water, getting the water going back in and getting it cleaned is, politically, it's like, those two things are just super sellable to the public as a, as a politician. And it makes me super excited to have some, some visuals. And I think, to use Councilmember Healy's comments, aspirations of where we want to go. On the fifteen-minute cities, love the idea of adding stores to parks. I think that's super creative and something very much that we can do. Mike, do you want to address anything that I said, or are you going to speak afterwards?
Oh, no, I, I'm just requesting a few moments when you're done.
Okay, great. Yeah, I heard. And so, so I think that's fantastic. I actually was just talking with some, someone last week about doing that at McNear. So really, really creative ideas. So just to the, to the, to the idea of aspirations. I went to school and I was in planning, and we did all these design classes. And at the time, SB three seventy-five was going through saying that transportation and land use planning were going to be integrated. And, and it was an epic fail, just hasn't happened, because this is the stuff that we were, we were thinking about in design school and, you know, back in the two thousands. So it's, it's really exciting to see something like this that gets us out of the weeds and gets us thinking about where we need to go. The, you know, I just keep saying to people that empty lots don't add to our community charm. They really do nothing for it. I think some of the things, seeing some taller buildings in and around the, the core of the town, six stories, I think was the tallest building that I saw. But that certainly seems like it could help overcome some of the pushback that we get around, like it doesn't pencil. I love seeing the reactivation of McNear Park. There's something I would love to get done before I leave the council, is to undo the harm that was done to that park and the attack on fun at that park. So I love seeing that. So I I love seeing that. In the decarb section, I think the city needs to definitely be paying attention to the um Inflation Reduction Act. It's gonna be billions for codes um that are not just for energy, but I think probably gonna be able to do some fun things with the habitability code, the health and safety code. Um, there's gonna be massive amounts of money coming from the state and the feds for building electrification. Really appreciated Luis's take on methane leakage and just how that sort of contributes, you know, and and sways the the picture for buildings. I think we need to do a lot more on job training and just, you know, um, I think it's a mistake to be messaging our climate neutrality goals as climate goals because that does nothing for the kitchen table. But um it's really a path to rebuilding Petaluma's middle class. And I'd love to see us actually really um double down on that with some um workforce standards in our contracts and things like that, that really sort of pull people in and um and help create a skilled and trained workforce. Um, I do have some questions. Was there any analysis of the population we'd need to support this level of build-out? Maybe that's for Abe. Um, maybe it just it wasn't able to happen yet, but that was something that came up in my mind.
I I could just mention very quickly, Brian, that the I I I mean, we have done this analysis in in different scenarios. And, you know, we're talking about numbers that that you don't currently have in the city. We're talking about if you were to electrify the entire city, potentially just from from buildings and transportation, you could create four thousand new jobs for the city. So this number is not sustainable just with the population of the city. So hence the need for uh ra- uh regional partnerships with other cities.
Got you. I'm just thinking about the, like, to the point of supporting neighborhood retail. One of the things is like, can our existing population or, you know, some of the growth projections that we're seeing for the general plan are, I would say, fairly modest. And we're, you know, I think the county's housing allocations increased like nine thousand percent, right? So building a fifteen-minute city, um, when we're spreading, you know, housing all over our county. You know, we're the southernmost city closest to the major job centers. And so um one of the things I'm interested in is like, could we make this vision more of a reality if we were weren't welcoming to um the county's housing allocation? For example, I know that there's probably council members up here that are squirming in their seats hearing that. Um, it definitely would be a tough sell to the people of Petaluma. But um if we think about the climate crisis as um as a global issue, um, it certainly needs to go outside of our um our little town boundaries. So I'd I'd love to see some analysis of like, how many people we'd need to support the services and and the retail that you're proposing. Because um the vision you provided is so good that um sometimes people just hear more more people and they think of more cars. And I'd love for them to think of like more trees and better water management and beautiful streets and things like that. So to the extent that you can help us sell population growth and things like that with um the beautiful vision you've given would be great. Um, the next question is for Miriam. Uh, the you you mentioned, you said the term develop the granary, and I couldn't, I wasn't sure whether you were thinking to like decommission and repurpose it for something else, rip it down, or like do something like that, or just sort of like build around it and accent it and really sort of make it like more of like a feature of that node. Can you just?
Yeah, definitely the second option.
Great.
Not, yeah, not, we're not.
Again, putting my politician hat on, it's much easier. Like, I love that idea, and I hate the former one. So thank you. Uh, definitely um wanna just sort of emphasize that the um like the comments that have been made around priorities and phasing um in your final report. You know, think about how much money we have to invest today. What policies we have, levers we have today. And like, if you can give us, you know, where we should be putting our money to get the biggest bang for the buck and the return. You know, that that's would be really helpful information to us, um, so that we can put one foot in front of the other. Yeah, I would say like, give us a top five policy, you know, playlist. You know, like revising the streets is a good, good one, Trung. I thought that was great to sh- to share from nineteen ninety-six. Beautiful. And then I I this isn't really a question, actually, now that I think about it. But I definitely heard reference to public transit as um not buses and micro mobility and thinking about scooters and and bike share. So um something to think about for the city. Um, we're kind of closed off on some of those. Um, also, going back to the food trucks, just our food truck ordinance or our acceptance of food trucks is a little backwards in this city. Um, feels like um brick-and-mortar restaurants rode our food, our ordinance around allowing food trucks. So just something to consider around barriers there. The one thing I didn't see in this, and I realize it's more of a cursory look, is the parks amenities. Um, and like access to parks is one thing, but like access to actual, you know, activities, right? Like some parks have things or don't have things. And um, you know, I've always thought about like, can I walk fifteen minutes and play basketball? Or can I walk fifteen minutes and let my kid play? Um, can I walk fi- fifteen minutes and get my dog some exercise? Like, um, is there any gonna be any look at that with respect to like park level access? Or is that sort of too too far below what what this project is?
Madam Mayor, may I have the floor?
Of course, yes.
Yeah, um, I first I wanna say uh that um uh in the interest of the of the team, um, we are going to have to exercise our own transit options uh very soon because we're pushing a dinner respite. Now, I'm very sorry to say that. So I I like to ask to be dismissed from the council member, the council meeting, since it was possible. I did wanna address a couple of things first. Uh, one, I I I'm sure, I hope you all realize that we are, we're we're unpaid volunteers. We've, you know, we've, we've been here for, what, three days, four days, you know? And so, so yes, many of the things that you would like to normally see in a in a comprehensive, you know, math general plan uh are not here. And I think some of those things will be able to get to in the in in Abe's work. You know, Abe is like, you know, the guy that doesn't show up to the meeting and he gets stuck with everything to do. That's 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 so Abe's gonna get stuck with those things. So but I also did wanna say the um Madam Mayor, the shopping malls were addressed in the ULI TAP. Um, we didn't get to them because they were not frankly relevant to the assignment that we had. So um yes, those are obviously redevelopment sites. I would, you know, we did, we had, if we were could be paid for a month or two's worth of work, we would definitely look at those sites, but they just weren't relevant to the to the assignments that we were given. And and yes, we realized that the private developer market is not going to do this work, is not gonna do much of this work. I think that's again why we why we think the public uh private partnership and the creative financing alternatives is something we want to, we want to think and write more about.
Thank you very much, and I I think that's all the questions, and we do.
One more, one more question.
One more before we.
I I know you need to get going, and I know this isn't gonna go there. Give us guidance on like what we can do to take it to that next level when you provide it there. Like, we're leaving it here, and here's where you take it to the next level. That would just be really helpful. So thank you very much for all your work. It's really, it's great to see it.
Okay, thank you. And um we will now be hearing ourselves from the from the public. You you do not have to stay for this part of it. So again, thanks to your entire team, and we do recognize that you are volunteers, and we highly praise you for your dedication to our city.
It was a great honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
And with that, uh, I am going to open public comment on this item. And I have one uh speaker card from someone here in the audience. And I will ask the city clerk if she has received any comments prior to tonight's meeting.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we received three public comments which are posted online with the agenda packet.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I will call on Darren Rickusson.
Uh, thank you, council. Thank you to the council and the city staff who really showed up in huge numbers to be part of this S-STAT project. I know sometimes these kind of projects, these grants that come in and wanna push design ideas, people can get defensive and wanna push it away. And I feel like it really came together and we're embracing this project and kind of the ethos behind it. And for me, I have kind of a slanted viewpoint, but I think one of the most obvious, biggest bang for your buck start is trees. Trees are the structure of communities, human communities, soil communities, natural, I mean, every community kind of is built around the infrastructure of trees. And when it comes to trees, I think uh Gina Bededetti at the meeting had one of the best ideas for practically improving our street trees and trees around the city, which is to develop permeable surface ordinance. She said her staff would be responsible for actually developing an ordinance that would classify levels of permeability of surface. Uh, that was one of the big things that got brought up, and I heard a lot of different feedback saying, oh, well, ADA won't allow it. Uh, the fire department regs won't allow it, both in sidewalk and in parking lanes. You know, that's a strategy we can use to really let our street trees breathe, get them out of boxes, have surfaces be permeable, let water get down in there, let air get down in there. And she said, all of those reasons you just listed are not why we don't do it. We don't have more permeable surfaces, first of all, because retrofitting all the public infrastructure is out of our scope right now. But if you can push developers to do that, we could help by having a set of actually permeability ordinances. And that would include things like what level of permeability needs to include swales? How do you deal with runoff uh or or leaching into the ground if you have potentially contaminants coming through the impermeable surface? So there is some thinking there, and we kind of both realized, wow, this is a step we could, we could actually take. I'm excited to see the economic feasibility component of retail. And I think in one of those conversations we had about fifteen-minute neighborhoods, it was also brought up that Petaluma has a lot of fifteen-minute neighborhood components. In some ways, as a city, it's not huge. And I think if you do prioritize tree cover to get people to actually use sidewalks and actually wanna bike and walk more because they have shade, and then you do some of the infrastructure improvements to transportation, making it eminently more bikeable and maybe making transit a little more reliable. Because when we thought about the core of a fifteen-minute neighborhood, what if that's, you know, a bus stop, a place to get some food, maybe a satellite of a green grocer that still gets all the benefits of a big supply chain, but has a smaller satellite in a core area? And then healthcare. So what are kind of the modules, the essential modules around fifteen-minute neighborhoods that could better serve some of the areas that aren't currently being served? And then how can we improve that other than car travel infrastructure to make Petaluma realize its existing potential to be a fifteen-minute neighborhood? Uh, so those are my thoughts. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. And with the, we're going on to John Hanania.
I do echo a lot of Darren's comment. You can't have people coming downtown when it takes them forever to get downtown. That's why you have empty places, because people are not shopping downtown because the traffic is so horrible. I can get in my car from my house, get to Senoma before somebody can get from my residency to, you know, this side of town. And, you know, you need to fix the traffic before you can fix anything else. And we've been talking about traffic for so long and not much being done about it. And you guys wanna shrink the streets, which is causes more of a problem. So what makes you think anybody's gonna come downtown? Parking is horrible. It takes forever to park. Um, y- you can't bike somewhere to go somewhere because the streets are not safe. And I don't understand why is it that you're guys not looking at the bigger picture to enhance the situation in Petaluma? So that's all I have to say.
Ned Oret.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Um, I haven't had time to consolidate all my thoughts, but first of all, I agree. Thanks to Veronica Olson for pulling this group together. It's so timely because we're in the middle of the general plan process. And these ideas, because when I'm working on the climate commission, you probably know, it is such a tough challenge to meet that. We have to make transformational changes. It isn't just a few technical switches. And the transformation can come from a lot of these ideas we've heard today. I agree, there's, we gotta find ways to make it attractive and financeable and all of that. That's what we're working on. But that's the way we have to go. And to handle, we've been thinking in general plans mostly on a traffic basis, as my predecessor pointed out. But that takes so much land and so much energy and so much pollution that comes with it. We have to transform out of that. And these ideas of these green connectors can make it so attractive and and it easy to take, you know, to go without the cars in for most cases, or even shared vehicles if we have to do that. But mostly in the micro mobility, as he's pointed out, it's not attractive yet because it's unsafe in many cases. But that can be remedied pretty easily compared to the other things that we have to do. So I'm thrilled that this this could get into, we can think it through and try to take it forward with the general pr- plan process. And then that can lead to uh appropriate tech uh policies to to bring them into action. I was impressed that wetlands were addressed by the team. We have one of the largest intact saltwater wetlands and on the west coast right here. It's a, it's a huge uh asset of of our community. Uh, the fifteen-minute uh city idea, I think, is the core thing to all of this. And then what Luis was telling us, trying to connect the decarbonization with equity. And um and then bringing up the the notion of the the huge danger from natural gas and the leaking of methane, we're actually working on that on the commission. We've, we've estimated the size of that. It has an immediate, very powerful impact on the earth's systems. And if we can't handle that, we're really in trouble. Uh, but beyond that, just one last thing on this emission thing. Sixty percent of our emissions, even given what they've told us, sixty percent occur that we create occur outside the city's boundaries. That's in the supply chain of all the goods and services the Petalumans consume. That adds up to sixty percent of the emissions that we cause. So you, we've, we've heard about the cars, the trucks and the buildings, but then there's another sixty percent. And the easiest way to address that.
Your time has expired.
Is through land use change.
Thank you very much. And that was my last card for someone here in the city hall. So I will ask the moderator to see if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Madam uh Mayor. Um, during public comment on agenda items, uh, the public is invited to make comments on the particular agenda item that is being presented to the city council. Um, public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Members of the public attending uh virtually can raise their um hand or press star nine. First speaker that we have is uh Bill. Bill, I'll allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin. Bill, you can unmute yourself and begin. His hand is now down. Uh, the next speaker that we have is Asaya. Asaya, you can now unmute yourself and begin.
Good evening, everyone, uh, Madam Mayor, council, city staff, Petaluma. Um, my name is Asaya Gonzalez, and I I appreciate this plan so much. Um, I did want to make it noted that um when it was brought up last week at the city council meeting, that at that point, the event was already full and therefore couldn't accept any further registration. I was really disappointed I couldn't go. However, I I appreciate the fact that it was outside eyes that came in to look at the city um to be able to come up with fresh new ideas. Um, I appreciate the level to which um thought was put into walkability. Um, I think these fifteen-minute neighborhoods are absolutely essential. Being over in the corner by the Rocking Memorial Dog Park where Schoenberger is, and as a young mom with little, little kids, it's incredibly hard to traverse without a car. Um, I was extremely disappointed that not a single node landed in District Three. Um, the Casa Grande one would be at least twenty minutes from a four-hundred-unit-plus housing development. Um, so while I appreciate that there's one over by the courtyard that was recently built, along with all of those homes that were recently built, I would really appreciate if we could get a livability over on this side of town. Um, I was somewhat disappointed that there wasn't any highlight to how Lakeville is absolutely impossible to walk on safely. There's no sidewalk uh down Lakeville. Just between our complex and over to um. Just between our complex and over to the Lucky's. And I wanted to address to what the mayor brought up and Councilman Healy brought up about the age of Amazon and what we spend and being able to support retailers. Well, that's where this plan is so important. If we don't do the push to implement any of this stuff, then, then we're going to continue to see these businesses dwindle and die. And another part of that is the city updating ordinances around the businesses that are allowed to include cannabis, to include things that the population actually needs. The parks, I loved everything that Councilman Barnacle had to say about the parks and whether or not people really want to go to them. There's no shade. There's no food. McNear Park would be the perfect spot for something similar to, if you've been to Bayer Farm in Santa Rosa, an actual accessible community garden that doesn't require a waitlist that you have to sit on for two years. That would be great. But that's my time. I will be running for city council in District Three. My name is Asaya Gonzalez. Thank you and have a good night.
The next speaker that we have is Sheila Baker. Sheila, I will now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Hello, city council members, mayor, vice mayor, you are the best. I just wanted to say that I really, really paid attention to the first part of this transit. In terms of the person coming from Windsor needing to drive, no, don't do that. Route 60 from Windsor, actually Cloverdale runs to Santa Rosa. And then Santa Rosa has an opportunity, bus riders, to take 44, 48. Could take Golden Gate Transit, but I highly recommend 44, 48 to Petaluma. Could also take the train to Petaluma. And so if someone wanted to go to Sebastopol or Monterio, that's Route 20. To Sonoma, that's Route 40. So there are opportunities to ride the bus. And I just wanted to acknowledge that we have the director of SCTA, Councilmember Fisher. Thank you for speaking out for transit. Thank you very much. And we just need to work on our regional transit, and we do need to make it seamless. And we need to make the, the timing, the routing more reasonable. We should have unmet needs hearings for our, once a year for our regional transit. And so I really, really, that's the part of this presentation I clicked in and I extremely appreciated. And I also appreciate what the last speaker said about, you know, it's just, we, it shouldn't be hard to walk. It shouldn't be hard to, to take the bus here in Petaluma. And yet sometimes we, we run into problems. I'm waiting for the, the routing to go from the Petaluma Market on up west and on up the hill. I call it up the hill because it is a hill, because I am walking and my shopping from Petaluma Market on up to where I live on Spring and Douglas. So I'd like to see bus service here. So, but I mean comparatively, Petaluma has really got it going compared to the regional transit. Petaluma is, is definitely on the way to, you know, they, they're going to be very successful, I think, in transporting people with transit. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak and take good care of everybody and good night.
Next speaker that we have is Susan Kirks. Susan, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Thank you, Erin. First, I'd like to say that I think the person who is probably endeavoring diligently to translate into Spanish, the comments of everyone this evening should be compensated doubly or triply. I honestly cannot even fathom how this person has been attempting to translate. And we all are forgetting to speak more slowly. And I'd really like to have the moderator or the person leading your meetings, whom I believe is the mayor, step in and just remind people, slow down a little. Other, and the translator should be, be doubly or triply paid for the effort to try and translate. I appreciated the comments of the three people who are in the chambers tonight. Thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. And I'd just like to add a couple of things. I do support the research and a reveal of natural gas leaks, methane, gas emissions. It's a critically important area that we should be giving equal time to, as Commissioner Orret said. So I'm really was pleased to hear him talk about that. And then I think maybe looking at the nodes that were described and building in information about habitat species and how these areas may connect or not connect to the wildlife corridors mapping project that I have completed for Petaluma Valley would be very relevant because we are talking about trees. Great, they're, we need them. It's not just trees. It's vegetation. It's what exists in an area. And we really need to begin to be sensitive to and understand the species other than us who reside in Petaluma. And lastly, I'd just like to say that does relate to the landscaping element, which consistently falls short here in Petaluma. And in general, I'm slowing myself down because the discussion about, you know, all of this development and life along the river and the, the Petaluma wetlands and marshes, there are some very sensitive habitat areas all along these, these areas. And, you know, we, we really must become more sensitive and more attentive because you just can't make the, say, people-centered, city-centered, river-centered community with, because we'll drive all of the species away. So I'd really appreciate it if we would include species other than us as humans.
Susan, your time has expired. The next speaker that we have is Eric. Eric, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just want to give thanks to Veronica, AIA, and a ton of all the public participants for this terrific project. First, I support, well, I support 150% what the first speaker Darren said, and, and my opinion said so convincingly on many topics. You know, I, I think this project will hopefully do a great job to serve, you know, many groups of people have been historically left out of planning, you know, women, children, people with disabilities, people of color, et cetera. So this project, I think, is just, you know, a, a great thing to be doing now, and it's very creative. I would emphasize that we should definitely be focusing on healthy tree canopy in this new design direction. And particularly right now, the trees that we have are, are very vulnerable in this drought climate. And, and I would implore that the council do everything you can to make it very clear to the public that preserving existing trees, as well as planting drought tolerant natives, is not only a good thing, but it's a critical use for our water. Like, that's something we should be using water for. So I, I don't want to have people like hiding behind their houses, trying to figure out whether they can water their drought tolerant tree once a month to keep it going. The answer should be yes, of course, do that. Let's make sure our water policy is perfectly clear in that point. Yes, you can water existing trees and use water to keep newly planted drought tolerant natives alive. Let's be able to say that. Let's make sure we're updating our tree ordinance. Just to, you know, make it really clear how best to take care of trees. How do we handle the trees in our neighborhood? Let's make sure that as we're developing this 15 minute city concept, which is just terrific across the board, that, you know, as we're going from place to place across 15 minutes, that we have that canopy available to, you know, support us as humans and all the biodiversity that these linchpin species really helps to support the understory, the, the animals and everything on the ground and under the ground as well. Thank you so much for the time. I really appreciate this project. Thank you.
The next speaker that we have is Taryn Abid. Taryn, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Hi, thank you very much. I'd like to extend my thank you to the AIA for their volunteerism and their expertise and doing all the hard work that they did. I would also like to thank Veronica Olson for being just a normal citizen that cares so much about our town that she put in work and initiative to get this wonderful opportunity for our, our town. And that's what makes Petaluma so great. And I wanted to say I appreciate the comments from council asking how to prioritize, how to think about what's a low hanging fruit, what we, what we can do now with the highest ROI. And funnily enough, when I attended last Friday night's Local Luma, I walked 20 minutes from my home and I encountered one shade tree. It was burning hot. I used to be able to encounter shade from two trees, but alas, one sycamore was hacked probably to death in the past couple of weeks. So this time now, there's only one magnolia tree on the corner of Madison and Perrin, thankfully. I recall that didn't relief have a program called 10,000 Trees? And didn't the estimate of that, wasn't it $300,000? And wasn't all or most of that money going to come from grants that they acquire? And I think they just needed the city's partnership for that. I'd like to see that discussion revived so that we can get going with the trees before we're down to like zero trees in this town. Also, I think that it's important to think about how to codify some of this low hanging fruit so that things like developers being given the okay by planning to cut down every single tree on a big chunk of land cannot happen. What's making the rounds right now is that Los Angeles, like 30 years ago, passed an ordinance so that developers can't hire their own pet consultants to do their own environmental impact reports to support their own financial interests. I mean, that just made no sense to me forever. And then I saw this article that Los Angeles even fixed that really glaring problem 30 years ago. Can we please think about doing that to make some progress? Thank you very much. Good night.
The next speaker that we have is Beverly. Beverly, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Okay, thank you all. This has been so exciting and I, it was wonderful to listen to. And I went to the meeting on Friday and it was really amazing. And I'm excited to hear all the creative ideas that the team had. One thing I wanted to kind of correct an impression, which is John Hanania was talking about, you know, the need to solve the traffic problems and how difficult it is to get to downtown. But if we implement a lot of the ideas here, we won't need to go downtown. People from all of this, over the city will have their own downtowns, their own community gathering places, their own places to shop. So we, there will be less traffic in that case. I also want to emphasize the importance of preserving our natural areas that already exist and not allow development to destroy them, which has been happening over and over and over again. I'm, I'm really amazed at the, even in this day and age, how many developments have been approved that cause terrible destruction. I think some of the things that I don't remember hearing about in terms of our little community hubs would be having entertainment. It would be so wonderful to walk to an area where we could have local band members playing, singing, dancing. I would love that. And community gardens. And another thing I wanted to mention is there's discussion of a well at Oak Hill Park. And to me, we need to really think carefully about that because it might affect the trees. You were talking about watering trees and how important that is. Well, in the Oak Hill neighborhood, we don't need to water our trees because we have water underground. And I'm worried that putting in a well might change that. So we need to think about the unintended consequences that could happen. So anyway, and especially I want to thank the AIA STAT group for doing all this hard work from traveling from their homes. It's no fun to take planes these days. And, and doing it as volunteers, that's amazing. And especially to thank Veronica Olson, who put all of this together. She must have worked her butt off. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The next speaker that we have is Emma Sullivan. Emma, I'll now allow you to speak. You can unmute yourself and begin.
Good evening, council. I also would like to echo my deep gratitude to Veronica Olson, who single-handedly found this grant and found it with only one month deadline to go. And within that one month, assembled a key team of citizens to finesse the grant. And then she stuck with it over a two-year period, so pretty heroic. We were beyond fortunate to have been chosen as one of eight cities by the AIA STAT. And we're beyond talented to have this, whoops. We're beyond fortunate to have this talented group of individuals have, to have given us their attention and their expertise. I, I love the presentation and the countless solutions that they provided, including pockets of housing within our urban growth boundary. We have so many areas of blight and especially the underutilized shopping centers that need to be re-envisioned. And I think that with regard to the fact that 30% of the trips in Petaluma are, are two miles or less, I think if somebody could get their candy fix or get a quart of milk or have a local cafe that they could meet their neighbor at and, and sit and talk within walking distance, that I think we all know that would cut down significantly on a lot of trips. So that's it. But I would like to, well, actually, my final comment is just to say that we have a critical task before us to implement these 21st century ideas and to become a model city. And so it's up to us whether we put a lot of these ideas into practice or we don't. Thanks.
And Madam Mayor, that's our last public commenter.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will close public comment. And I will see if there are any last comments on the part of the council, Councilmember Fisher.
Thank you. I was just wondering if we could hear from staff, if Christina Paul or Heather were in the audience, if they had any comments. And, and then I wanted to, one of the ideas in changing our boulevards, obviously, the example given was Washington, but the idea was to have that happen on McDowell and Lakeville and all of our major arterials. And we have a McDowell design underway right now. And so the question is, can we go ahead and utilize this in that design process?
Okay. I see Heather Heinz is on the available, so do you want to respond to that or Christina as well?
Yeah, and, and thank you, Mayor Barrett, council members. I, I don't have a specific response. Obviously, we are seeing all of this at the, for the first time, as you all are this evening. It obviously carries forward a lot of the comments that we have been hearing through the public outreach process that we've been undertaking with the general plan. And as, as we've talked to Veronica and the other steering committee members, this is a great time for this input and will be a great addition to the feedback for the general plan and the thinking as we move in to the next phases of the general plan. So I'm not prepared to, you know, specifically respond to any of it.
So I'm not prepared to um, you know, uh, specifically respond to any of it. I think it was a wonderful process. Uh, we have the um, the honor to participate in the day on Friday. Um, and um, very exciting to see um, all of, all of the community members that were able to attend. And this is um, great addition. We look forward to seeing um, the report that comes out and um, sharing this also with our general plan consultants.
Okay, um, did you want to add anything, Christina?
I feel like Heather really captured it. I think uh, like most of the folks on this, on this call, in this meeting, we are really excited to to dig into this a little bit more, think about the feasibility, think about, you know, what could be low-hanging fruit that we're hearing here and and also hear some community feedback on what folks want to prioritize or think are are great or not-so-great ideas that we just heard.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any more? Did you want to go on? Okay, Councilman Barnacle?
Yeah, I'll take uh, respond to some of the public comments that I thought were good. First, thank you, Susan Kirks, for reminding us to speak slowly. Um, it is a learning curve and we appreciate the consistent reminders. Mr. Rukusen's comment about a permeable surface ordinance, I'd love to see some of, well, generally, um, I'm hoping that the general plan provides a framework to implement this vision. So if there are barriers to um, to achieving the vision that um, we don't think we can overtake in the general plan, I'd love a report out on what those um, on what those are and what, because my experience um, has been that many of the, many of the impediments to these things come down to political will. And I'd at least like to um, make sure that um, it's the will of the council and not some sort of like long entrenched barrier that um, is just an assumption. Like, for example, the the division for Washington Street or um, or other things like that. So please, um, if there are barriers to, to doing this, um, the permeable surface ordinance, I thought was a good example of of that, that um, if we need to do that, let's um, let's look at that. Imagine the revised tree ordinance or tree committee might be taking that up. Other things, trees, um, and I would say water. Um, the thing that's coming out to me here is we need to add some more nuance in our water policy. I voted against the last one because we didn't address commercial medians. Our current water shortage plan doesn't address purple pipe water usage and wastage. Um, and yet, we want to plant all these trees and um, using every drop of water is sort of, I I would think, something that we need to embed in our culture and in our policy documents. Um, and I know that staff is doing that, but we haven't done it in the policy documents yet. And as a result, um, we're using water shortage as a, as a way to um, to hold us back from things. The, appreciate the comment about need more focus on District Three and on Lakeville. Um, I think it's a good example of why we're moving to district elections, that all the council up here didn't um, didn't even notice that. And we didn't bring up some of the issues that were ignored on Lakeville, and that's why we're going to district. So I'm excited to see some representation from District Three up here. Um, to Mr. Hanania's comments, um, your district will be addressed by Coffield Bridge if, when that gets, your district should be addressed by the Coffield Bridge. It should help with uh, with traffic congestion. Also, um, the, the antidote to, and someone said the the antidote to Amazon is this, and I couldn't agree more that um, this is how we localize our economy and and um, not let Amazon take us over and stop that. So um, instead of thinking about it as this market trend that we can't do anything about, we can think about it as the market trend we can do something about, um, we just need political leadership. I'm really bummed to not see more participation from young people. Um, a lot of the people who are going to be here a hundred years from now or fifty years from, let's say fifty years from now, aren't in this room. Um, and it's, it's unfortunate. Um, and then the final thing that I'll say is that a lot of people um, right now are down on development, down on developers. Um, but that's how we're going to get this vision. And um, we're going to need growth. Um, I'd love to open a conversation with the, on the council about um, arena targets. And if the, it's morally right for us to push the county to increase its housing allocation nine thousand percent when um, taking in some of the housing numbers from the county might help us manifest this glorious vision of our city, reduce greenhouse gas emissions for the entire region and um, and allow us to have, you know, great public transit, nice, beautiful streets, um, recharge our aquifers, um, address all these problems that maybe growth and development is the answer to our problems. We just need to do it in a more responsible way and a more, in a way that thinks about our future and not demonize it, not let it divide us in elections, um, and instead provide a better vision for what growth and development and what developers could represent for the future of Petaluma.
Thank you, Councilmember Healy.
Yeah, just, just one thing. Um, to the extent that the city wants to look at um, permeable surfaces and having more regulation around that going forward, I would just point out there's, there's a fair amount of science that needs to be taken into consideration. And that, I can tell you that as our longtime representative to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, um, the recharge areas for our aquifers don't really include the large portions of the city that are adobe soils. Um, that's essentially a block to recharge. Um, so we can have that conversation, but it should be based on science and not just on rhetoric. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any comments? No? Uh, Councilmember McDowell?
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, I did want to touch back on McDowell there. And um, since it had come before P-back several times, what the project should be. And I know it bids this week, so it's out of the design phase and almost into the award phase. Um, we asked that um, that it be considered for a road diet and they told us, staff told us uh, that um, the, the um, traffic count were so high. Maybe that's not a future consideration because maybe we want to try and reduce um, traffic count in general. Um, but um, but then the second question was asked, well, what about South of Corona? Isn't that an area where speed is a problem and traffic is less high volume? So I mean, I think we have to look at every job in in that light. Um, and then um, and then I I'm on board with the permeable discussions. I see a lot of it in the new developments that they, you know, uh, the parking areas are permeable, uh, swim drink um, uh, collection areas for their, um, that they're required to do under basma and um, and and could be more. But, but I would love to see that into our existing infrastructure. I think all of our climate issues only really get addressed if we get into our existing infrastructure and existing customers. The things we, the people here now do are are more impactful than um, the, the one or two percent growth rate that we have. And we don't have time. We need, we need our own individual existing practices to be modified. Thanks.
Thank you. And I do not see your hand up, Councilmember King, but do you, yes, okay, go ahead.
Yes, uh, as the lone zoomer here, um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I I just have one request. I I think it was um, in response uh, to one of the post-presentation comments from one of the panelists. I, you know, a lot of this is very, it's very interesting, but you know, in terms of getting something done, um, we, we, we are going to need some um, some specific uh, focused uh, suggestions. Uh, but one of the comments was about uh, public-private partnerships to get some of this done, since a lot of this uh, would require private, private uh, investment and and willingness to do it. So I'd like to see what their ideas are with respect to that in in the final report or presentation. And perhaps some, some examples of where the public part, the money can be taxed um, on a federal level, state level, and so forth. There's one thing to say, public, you know, public, private, but the public part, you know, involves certain investment, not just um, just the planning part that involves an investment part. So um, I I found that piece pretty interesting, but I'd like to see some examples, uh, perhaps of where, where that's worked elsewhere and and what ideas they have for that. Other than that, I don't have anything further. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And um, I would just like to reiterate uh, everybody's thanks to the whole team that put this together. Uh, and I do look forward to seeing this um, in a written form that I think will be a a little bit more um, complete and will include uh, some of that um, that financing part that um, poor Abe who showed up late uh, got put on his plate. So uh, thank you, everybody, for uh, participating this evening. And um, that is the end. We are not taking an action on this, this evening. So that is the end of this workshop. And with that, we will be adjourning our meeting at eight forty-five.